We all said?
Yep.
Good evening and welcome to the June 13th meeting of the Town Council. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The only announcements I have are meeting dates that coming council on Wednesday, June 19th. The council will hold its annual retreats slash goals session. We'll be having that meeting at Buckley's, at the Carriage House at Buckley's Great Stakes.
Yep.
And that meeting will go from nine AM till four PM. Then on Thursday, June 27th and Thursday, July 25th are regular meetings, both at seven PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room.
Paul. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just for the council, July 25th has been changed. That meeting, that meeting's changed from the week before. Our media division is having an event with other area media divisions that night. So we just decided to move it back a week to the 25th of July.
And we only have one meeting on that month anyway.
Yeah, one meeting a month that way, yes. I also, come join the Merrimack Public Parks and Rec Department this summer for a free weekly summer concert series at Abbey Griffin Park. Concerts are held on Wednesday night starting at six PM and each week features a different musical style. Our series this year is sponsored in part by Franklin Savings Bank. Thank you very much. Who will be giving out free popcorn during all shows. For a complete list of performers in this year's series, visit Parks and Recreation Department website at www.merrimackparkswithanS and rec.org. That's MerrimackParksAndRec.org. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Comments from the press and public? If you'd like to address the council, you could step to the mic or sit at the table here. Thank you. And seeing no one, we have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, no appointments. The first thing on the agenda then is council to hold a public hearing to consider the approval of the renewal of a discretionary preservation easement for the historic barn located in 19 Severns Bridge Road in accordance with RSA 79D. And.
Lauren's here, Mr. Chair, and I could speak to that.
Okay, please do.
So, this has come before the council now twice. In 2004, they got their initial exemption for the historic barn and then it came back in 2014. Every 10 years, the, what these historic barns per RSA, they have to come back in front of the council and the council has to vote to keep them with their exemption. The council can vote for an exemption of 25%, 50%, or 75%. I believe in 2014, even though the paperwork and the deed that was in the pack up says 25%, I believe the council voted for a 75% exemption on that barn in 2014. So this is a public hearing for people to come and speak about it for it or not. Lauren's here to answer all your technical questions. We did request pictures. They did do some work on the barn to fix it up. So it's just not sitting there decaying. So it's of the pleasure of the council what exemption amount they would like to give, 25%, 50%, or 75%. And then they're responsible, once you do this, for registering the deed. The homeowner is.
Yep. Tom?
Is there limitations on the exemption? They need to use those funds to restore the barn or did I misunderstand it?
A technical question for Lauren.
Okay.
Well, I have no problem with that.
So it's not that they have to use those funds to maintain it, but that is the idea, is that to receive a reduction on the assessed value, which would save tax dollars, they're obligated by the easement deed that's recorded on the property to maintain and preserve the structure. So that's why we had asked for evidence of what they had done to preserve the structure over time because they have had the easement now for a total of 20 years, a 10-year term, and then the renewal in 2014. And just to clarify, so they received, their assessment was 25% of full market value, which was a 75% reduction. So I did confirm and that is what they received from, that was 2014.
And you said the assessed value is $30,000 roughly?
Right, so at 70, so depending on how it gets worded, it gets worded funny sometimes because a 25% of full value is a 75% reduction. But if you were to give them a 25% reduction, they would be at 22,500. A 50% reduction would put them at 15,000 and a 75% reduction would put them at 7,500. So that deed would get updated, it would have to specify the term again, and whatever you decide as an assessment in there. And, yep. That's really all you have to consider tonight is as long as you feel that it's still meeting that and they're maintaining the structure would be where you would think that that assessment should be.
Yeah, I've just driven by casually because my son lives across the street and I see it and it looks to be in really good shape, though I've not been inside it. So I guess the amount of reduction, proper wording is something that has to be determined. I don't have a problem with, you know, leaving it where it is, but if that's not what the council considers appropriate, we can have those conversations.
It's nice to see that they're utilizing their monies to maintain it. I think that's the purpose and I'm glad to see that you got verification.
Yep, absolutely. I think a lot, I think that a lot of people don't fully understand the whole statute and, you know, thought it was a, just a simple tax reduction or assessed value reduction resulting in a tax reduction when there is an obligation to maintain and preserve it. That's the intention of it. Yep, and there are, there are a lot of different grants out there through the state to preserve these structures as well, so I'm not sure if they've explored that option, but there is a lot for preservation of those structures as well out there.
For the sake of discussion, do we have any clue of how much they've put into preserving the building or?
The roofing job was about 27,000, I think. All right, sorry about that.
You have the estimate there, Paul?
Yeah, I had, I'd seen the estimate.
That was about 27,400, sorry.
It was 27? Oh, I thought you made me right, I was pretty excited.
Yeah, I know.
No, it's a little blurry here. Got to fix my glasses, I'm sorry.
So, so there's a reduction for 10 years and they spent 23,000 on the roof, we know of. Do we have a plan for further preservation work or any idea of the cost factors?
They did not provide, they did not provide that with their application. It is an obligation, but not anything specific is what was further needed to preserve and maintain the structure.
So I guess I'm just trying to understand so that the public can understand this reduction is approximately, what, I'm having a hard time, it was $22,000?
Correct. In value, yep.
Has a tax impact of X dollars over 10 years.
Four hundred and forty dollars a year, four forty times 10. Forty-four hundred?
Did you just do the math?
Quickly.
Okay.
Quickly, it's roughly 44 to 4800 dollars over the 10-year period.
Over the 10-year period?
Yeah. It's like 400, it's 22,000.
What was the tax rate last?
Say 20 dollars is 440. Yeah. For one year, times 10 years is 4,400 dollars.
Yep, in taxes, thank you.
In taxes.
Okay.
Equivalence.
Equivalence of that.
So there, I mean, I just wanted it to be clear that they're putting a lot more money into it than the tax reduction is giving them and we appreciate that because it is a historic building and, but I didn't want somebody at home thinking, wow, they're saving $22,000 a year for 10 years.
No, right, they're saving 22,000 in value. So that clarification is very important. It really doesn't equate to what needs to go into these properties to preserve them in any way, shape, or form.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that makes me a lot more comfortable agreeing with the number that you are recommending.
I'm not necessarily recommending, but I'm amenable to it for sure.
I agree, I agree with you. I would continue as well. So in the motion, you have to, yep.
Yes, open up a public hearing first.
I'm sorry.
What?
Oh, it's a public hearing.
Seven ten, I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you for the reminder, Paul.
Like to address this, the preservation easement, please step to the mic or have a seat next to Lauren. And seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing at seven eleven. Now it's the pleasure of the council.
Is there a particular type of motion that you need, Paul?
Yes, the, and I'm going to do this on the fly, so bear with me. We vote to approve a reduction in value of 75% which equates to a 25% value at seven, 6,000, 7,000, what is it, 22?
7,500.
7,500 dollars. Retroactive back to April 1st, 2024. And as such, enter into the easement documentation for the property located at 19 Severns Bridge Road in accordance with RSA 79-D.
Did you want to put that, renewed, yeah, of April 1st of 2033?
For a 10-year, we could say for a 10-year period of April 1st, 2024 through April, March 31st, 2020, 2033. Three or four?
Thirty-four.
It'd be through, 34.
It wouldn't go through 34, it would go through 33.
33, right.
I had read 33 in the document.
To March 31st.
April, right, through March 31st of 20, of, yes, 2033. That's 10 years.
This is only the beginning of the meeting.
I know. I wrote it in there for you.
They were with me just a second.
Just checking.
Don't ask me to repeat it.
And I'm going to say so good and you're going to have to find the, check the video.
Yeah, we'll get the language for it and we'll get the easement written up.
Okay, that's, I did read here in our paperwork that it said 331, this should state a term of 4-1, 24 through 331-33.
Correct.
That's the 10-year period.
That's 10 years.
So it is 33 then?
Yes.
Yes.
It's every 10 years.
Yeah, no, I understood that, I thought you were talking.
So why is that?
I thought you were saying 34.
Because April 1st, April 1st, 24, April 1st, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32. It should be through April, March 31st, 34. It should be.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
I'm just going off what's in my paperwork.
You said April 1, 24 was year one, right? So you're going to go for a year, so the first year is 25, it's not 24.
No, it's for this year. It's tax year 24 is the first year.
Yeah, but that's the beginning of the year.
25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33.
Right, April 1st is the assessment date, that is the tax year. So April 1st of 24 and it would go through 33. So it would be back up to be renewed, right, so it would be back up to be renewed if they were going to.
The new tax year would be 24. Because we are into the new tax year now.
Correct.
Very good.
If you guys think it's right, I don't understand.
We'll make sure in the documentation that it covers it and that it's for the 10-year term.
I understand.
It is, actually, it is March 31st, 34. It is through March 31st, 34.
Yes, now that you say that, right, because it would have been April to April.
You're right.
Okay.
Because it goes through 33.
They get, they get the assessment through 33, tax year 33. 34, they have to read.
Last until 34, yeah.
Okay, do you know who wrote this messaging in our paperwork?
Probably me.
All right. I was feeling silly that I couldn't add 10 to it, but I was just going by.
No, I know, I'm doing the same thing, 24, 25, 26, yeah, no, through 33.
So those modified dates, I move.
Motion by Nancy Harrington?
Second.
Second by Tom Kenny. Any further discussion on the motion? Nancy?
I just have a question. So what happens if, like, in this situation, I've never had this before, but if the property is sold, is there an agree, does this agreement have to be made with the new owner? I mean, this is for 10 years, so just say the property is sold, does, what's?
It's written in, they actually have it written in their deed for these people. If they sell the property, the new owners have to come in, it can get it. Because it's written in deed to the current property owner.
And it's recorded, so that easement agreement is recorded just like any other easement agreement. Yep, and then there's, there's, I didn't print the whole statute off, but I think it's in your packet during the time, if they're not going to preserve and maintain it, if they let it get destroyed or decay, you know, there's an out of that. But it would transfer typically with the property and as long as the new owners were going to continue to maintain that, it would be enforced, yep.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? See, now I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 600. Thanks, Lauren.
Absolutely. Have a great night.
You too, take care.
Thank you, Lauren, appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, council to deliberate and elect the individual to fill the vacancy of the town council until the April 2025 election pursuant to ours, sorry, Charter Article 4-5. This is of course to fill Barbara Haley's seat.
You're moving that ahead of your legislative updates?
What are we doing? No, I'm not. Legislative updates for any of our legislative delegation who would like to come forward, please, Maureen, feel free to step to the mic. I was expediting the evening.
I'm all for it, but Maureen's actually here tonight. Representative Moonie's here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to members of the Town Council. For the record, I am State Representative Maureen Moonie of Merrimack. I did submit a written update today to all of you, but I'm here in person and thought I would just briefly go over two bills this evening, two bills. The first is Senate Bill 553. And this is related to what's called the Public Deposit Investment Pool, otherwise known as P-DIP. Now, I bring this up to you because it's related to towns, municipalities, school districts being able since 1992 to pool their money together in order to meet certain needs. It hasn't been touched really, that statute, or toyed with, in almost 30 years and our very own Paul McCally was there when the P-DIP was first established. Bob Lavand, okay? But this bill, all of a sudden, comes in and says, as for P-DIP investments, they will only be done in New Hampshire. Now, believe it or not, that language passed out of the Senate 24 to 0. It came to the House, House Finance, in fact, where I sit, and the language was majorly watered down, I mean, to the point of a suggestion that the investor of the money, you know, could or may not, and a very loose language. And really, that was watered down primarily because an outpouring of municipalities, school districts, town treasurers, town clerks, town managers, came into the hearing on Senate Bill 553 and expressed their dislike for any sort of limit like that to investments being only in New Hampshire and to leave the whole P-DIP statute just as it is. Make a long story short, that bill, Senate Bill 553, was moved to interim study. So it's done for now, but I bring it to your attention because the New Hampshire Bankers' Association was majorly in favor of this. The fact that it came out at 24 to nothing in the Senate is no joke, so I just thought I would put that on your radar, though not a concern for this session, but it may come up in future sessions. Senate Bill 553. Okay, next is House Bill 2024, fondly known as the 10-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. It is in this bill that the provision regarding Continental Boulevard, its maintenance and repair costs, is located. Now, again, to make a long story short on this, the version that left the New Hampshire House to go to the Senate included a provision whereby Continental Boulevard would become the town's to bear. And I think I speak for the full Merrimack delegation when I say we know that cannot, under any circumstances, occur. Continental Boulevard is not a town road, no matter if you classify it or call it or whatever, what have you, the look of it, the purpose for it, its history, is not a town road. When it went to the Senate, there was great representation from the town of Merrimack, both from the State House delegation and from our town. And the Senate held firm that that provision to transfer ownership of Continental Boulevard to the town would be taken out. Well, here we go again, it became a real issue, a real sticking point between now the House and the Senate in that bill, so it went to a committee of conference. And that took place on June 4th, very recently. I stayed the entire time, along with Representative Nodder. We were there in the morning, they discussed it, they recessed till four o'clock. The committee of conference is made up of three senators and four state representatives, none of which, I'll add, were appointed from Merrimack. But we thought there was a chance that the Senate would hold its ground to the point that there would be no agreement at all on House Bill 2024. And then, all of a sudden, as is normal, I suppose, in politics and legislation, it's always changing, an amendment appears. And the amendment says, well, Merrimack, you'll have Continental Boulevard as a state road for only five years. And in 2029, on a certain date, I believe July 1st, it will become, in the statute, a town road. The committee of conference agreed. Again, no members from Merrimack were on that committee of conference. And today, by a voice vote, the House ratified that agreement in the bill on a voice vote. So here we go again. We have to remain extraordinarily vigilant as a town, as a delegation going forward. It's an election year, our reps have to be absolutely on top of this issue, as does our state senator, because we cannot, under any circumstances now or in five years, or sooner than five years. The filing period for incumbents for next year is in September and we have to be very mindful that nobody is going to try to make the 2029 deadline even sooner. So again, the message is, we must be very vigilant, we must hold our ground, and Continental Boulevard, under no circumstances, can be statutorily classified as a town road. And with that, I'll conclude my legislative updates and I want to thank you all for your service, it's all good to see you. I see you all around town and now in a formal setting, so no matter which of the two I see you, it's always good to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maureen, disappointing news, but we knew.
The fight's not over yet.
It's disappointing, especially since the senators, I thought, were going to hold their ground, but they suddenly just threw us under the bus with a five-year delay. I think the one point I heard was that, you know, that even if it went down this year, it could come back the next year, or the next year, or the next year, or maybe every two years, regardless, because, you know, we're not going to be able to statutorily state that that road will never be a town road and then not have that statute changed at some future date. So it's always up in the air, but it's definitely, I appreciate the work that you guys did to fight for it. And maybe one of these days, we can get people to quit listening to the lies that we built the road as a town of Merrimack, because we didn't, the state built that road, they cleared the trees, they took land from the school district to build it and things like that. So why they, why they continue to say that for 30 or 40 years it's been a town road is beyond me and we just have to find a way to get past those false statements. Thank you.
But the one good thing now is it will not come up in the 11th hour by an amendment by a representative. Will we have our chances during public hearings to speak to it, to get the truth on the records when they bring up the 10-year plan in two years? We'll be able to get the truth on the record because we'll be out in force. I'm sure it's be something we'll be talking about in great detail on the 19th.
In the next couple of years, yeah. I had to reach for it.
Again, thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Nancy, yes?
Thank you, just wanted to add to Maureen's point. Two of, as Maureen, Representative Moonie said, we have the ability to bring back bills and in our discussion and planning for this, we did, we worked with Senator Ricciardi, who was certainly on our side, and explained to, called me immediately at the end of that Senate Committee of Conference to say, to explain what happened. And she wanted to keep her promise to us and she, I think she did a great job. The challenge was Representative McConkey, that was his primary goal on the DOT, in the 10-year plan, was to move that forward. And Representative McConkey is running for Senate. Senator Ricciardi shared that that was an agreement between Senator Bradley and Senator McConkey that, in trying to hold their word to us and also just trying to give us some time to figure out what to do, that the next best option was to just put a, give us a time thing. The challenge with that is, what we've seen, it comes back every year. And somebody could bring a bill forward and say, okay, it's not going to be 20, 2029, it's going to be 2026. So we're not really, it gives us a breathing room. And so we've had multiple meetings about this. We will be meeting in August, the former chair of the Public Works and Highways will be coming here to meet. There was a lot of information, we had shared about the truth about this, the history. And for many people on that committee, it was the first time they were hearing that. And what has happened is, over time, not necessarily purposely misinformed, but history has been repeated and it hasn't been accurate. So people are making a decision and when new people are elected, they go onto a committee and they hear, oh, you know, Merrimack wanted that and, you know, they promised to pay the tolls. So anyway, we need, they're going to come here, sit down, hear us out, and they learned a lot and, you know, they made very clear that it was misinformation from the Department of Transportation. To address that, in September, I know, I'm going to be filing a bill that, because it's like you can't specifically address, you know, one particular place, it makes it a lot easier if we tried to do it for statewide. And the bill that I'll be filing would be to address this and it would be that the state cannot unload state property onto a municipality without the agreement of the municipality. So that's one thing. And the municipal, we've already spoken with the Municipal Association and they're recognizing that, and this could happen to anybody. So that would be a broadway of attaching this. And I know Representative Rung is going to file one to attack it from a different angle where the, she would move that tolls, any tolls on highways, as we have them, would have to be placed within one mile of the start, so that it's truly a user fee. Because we have, what, eight miles from Nashua and there's no tolls to get to Merrimack. So if that were the case, that's, you think back, if Nashua didn't pay tolls for 30 years that we did, look at their population, 84,000 people, if they had been paying the tolls all along, we wouldn't be in this DOT shortfall of it. And they keep looking to us. So those are just two of the ideas, I'm sure other representatives have other ideas, but it's certainly a huge problem and I know we've all spoken to everybody, both sides of the aisle, and said, this is just not acceptable and this shouldn't be, Merrimack should not be seen as the default, the cash cow for the DOT and the state highway system. So I just want to elaborate on that. The other thing was, there were, we had a number of votes today on those committees of conference and one of them, we heard a lot from the, the, around, one particular bill is HB 1370, it was relative to eliminating voter ID exceptions. And it would have removed the ability for voters to file an affidavit on Election Day. It would have required some steps that the poll workers, the, were opposed to. And the Secretary of State said it was ripe for lawsuits, et cetera, and so that bill was tabled, so it did not go forward. There'll be no changes to that. Another bill, just interesting, we've talked here about landfills and, you know, some of the environmental concerns, that another bill, HB 1386, was adopted and it was a bill that would prohibit the disposal of lithium-ion batteries in solid waste landfills. And so that was, that was a, was adopted. Let's see, just, something that a lot of, I know I received a lot of mail from, it doesn't really, you know, impact us as a town council, but it was relative to the legalization and regulation of cannabis. And there was a House bill and then the Senate amended it and there was quite a discrepancy in how the whole structure would be happening, it would be overseen by the liquor, the liquor commission and, you know, we're talking about the regulation of licenses and restrictions and today. And today, that bill also was tabled. So even supporters of, you know, legalizing this felt that it was not a good enough bill, and that $8 million would have gone into the investment upfront, and would have been harder to pull that back and really fix it the way that it should be. So I'm sure we'll see that bill again. And then the other one was HB 1665. That was a bill that was going to increase the maximum income eligibility for education freedom accounts, and it would have gone from 350% to 425% of federal poverty guidelines. And that's already higher than nearly every other public assistance program. And so that bill, too, was not adopted. And Representative Mooney, I filled you in on the 10-year plan. So today was it. It was our last day of school. And we had an ice cream social, too.
Perfect. Anybody have any questions? You all set?
I just want to say thank you to all the reps for helping, trying to help us, and it did. I mean, it's better than what we, it's better than what was initially proposed. It's not what we wanted. But even if it had been omitted, what you're suggesting is it might have been, next year it'll be put back in. So it's just gonna be a yearly fight until something comes up permanently, like what you're talking about. So thank you all.
Appreciate it. Paul, Town Manager's report that I skipped over as well.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make this quick. But we usually don't get big audience like this, so.
I know.
Merrimack TV will be covering MHS Graduation Live this Saturday morning, beginning at 10:00 AM. Watch live on cable channels 8, HD channel 1072, and Merrimack TV app. Graduation 2024 will play throughout the summer and will be available on demand on Merrimack TV app beginning next week. This is the 20th high school graduation that Merrimack TV has covered. I want to congratulate all the graduates of the class of 2024 and wish them well. They have a bright future in front of them. And in addition, if you do not need to be in the area of Babuza Lake Road, McGowan Street, and the high school from 10:00, and again around noon, 1:00, please stay away, because there will be a lot of congestion. It's supposed to be a beautiful day, and I'm sure families will be out there watching their graduates graduate their high school. So once again, congratulations to everybody who's graduating for the class of 2024.
Thank you, Paul. All right, now, council's to deliberate and elect the individual to fill the vacancy on the town council until the April 2025 election pursuant to Charter Article 4-5. We had four applicants come in, and last night, we had our interviews, and they were really all very good, qualified people. It was enjoyable to meet them and have those conversations. A lot of good back and forth, and good ideas that had come forward. Last evening, we narrowed it down to two people, and that was Wolf and Wolf von Chon, Wolfram, and Jennifer Jobin. And so we can accept nominations if you would like, and move from there. If you'd like.
I would like to nominate Wolf von Chon for the open seat at town council.
And we don't need to second rate themselves.
No, not for nomination. Nancy?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Jobin.
Okay. All righty. If there's no other further nominations, I would like to, if there's discussion on...
Can I speak to my nomination?
Absolutely, yep. That's what we're looking for.
So I've known Wolf from Rotary, known him as an MBD Commissioner, several campaign events, and some public events around town. I've always found Wolf to have a very cordial and pleasant personality, and I've always enjoyed conversations with him. I think if you talk to the folks in Merrimack that have worked with Wolf, including the Rotary Club, I would challenge you to find a single person that has a negative thing to say about Wolf's personality. During his interview, Wolf showed a keen understanding of what makes up the tax rate. As evident from the last election, the tax rate is probably the number-one concern for the citizens of Merrimack. Not only did Wolf show of an understanding of the part the budget plays in the tax rate, but he also elegantly explained how assessments of commercial and residential properties disproportionately impacted the tax rate. Wolf showed a level of knowledge about the budget and tax rate that I don't think I understood until after serving on the council for several years. Wolf is on his third term as an MBD Commissioner, and has put a lot of effort towards making Merrimack drinking water safe. This alone should put Wolf at the top of the list. I can't think of another candidate that has done as much to help the citizens of Merrimack. Finally, if you recall Wolf round for town council as previously, when the late Lon Wood seat was open. The candidates during this election were not running against a sitting councillor, but an open, available seat. Wolf was the only candidate that was willing to put his name out there and take the time to campaign for the citizens of Merrimack. Wolf had a very, very favorable showing, but was narrowly defeated by Councillor Murphy. This strong showing is another sign that Wolf has the support of a large portion of Merrimack. For these reasons is why I'm nominating Wolf for the open seat of Merrimack Town Council.
Thank you, Andy. Any further comments? Did you want to speak to your nomination?
Sure, thank you. I nominated Jennifer Jobin. I think last night, we had a, some, it was a really difficult decision, because we had two very qualified candidates that came to the forefront at the end of our interviews, and both brought very different strengths, I think, to the town council. For me, one of the, the things that I was really interested and intrigued by was Jen came very well-prepared. She was articulate. She gave examples of situations, of suggestions that things would benefit the town council, especially around communication. And, you know, in addition to, you know, the other departments that Jen's been involved with in terms of the library, she's worked to, you know, on the budget for the library, had to make some difficult decisions when we went to a default budget, and cuts had to be made. And I think that she would be an excellent addition to the town council.
Thank you, Nancy. Any further comments on our nominees?
I would also like to add that I think everyone that presented themselves last night were extremely qualified candidates that want to get more involved and serve our town community. I was very impressed by Wolf, and I was extremely impressed as well by Jennifer. Jennifer, I think, as the other councillor, Murphy, had stated, Jen came extremely well-prepared. Jen's not only been involved in our town, but she's also been involved in our school district. She brought some great ideas that included how the town council and the town could be more involved with the people of our town, trying to present what the priorities of the budget are to the taxpayers, so that they have a full understanding of our budget when they go to vote. Jen has also been involved in the NYA, and, you know, I think she truly wants to give back to our town, so I think Jen will be a great asset to our town council.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
We should say something.
Let me just, I'd like to add that, and just amplify the fact that all four of the candidates were excellent candidates, and any one of them would have been great, and I appreciate all of them coming forward. The two that are being presented tonight weren't even split in my mind. They, they both have put a lot of effort into the town. They're both very articulate. They both have good thoughts and patterns. They both express themselves very well. Not to say that the others didn't also. There was just, it was hard to make a decision amongst the four. But I, when it finally comes down to it, I think that for this position, this time, this appointment, I'm gonna lean towards Jen, Jennifer Jobin. But I really encourage everybody to step up and continue to pursue open seats in the town council, because we definitely need people that are willing to step in and fill those positions. And some of us have been on the board for probably a lot longer than we should, myself definitely included, and so don't count on me being around forever. There will be openings in town council for people to fill. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll say something, too. I had a, I have a real dilemma. To be honest with you, I agree, what floated to the top were Jennifer and Wolf, for me. And again, I appreciate the other two candidates, who are also well-qualified, who are also very articulate, who put their hat in the ring, and it's not easy, and I appreciate that. And to be honest with you, my feeling is there, again, equally, equally good. And so what I had to do was weigh one against the other, and both, each one have their unique skill set. And there are certain advantages to those skill sets. And at different times within what we need as a town council, those needs change. And to be honest with you, I think Jennifer has a skill set we need. She has a skill set having to do with marketing, and she came up with some really good ideas that I think the council needs, that I don't have, and I don't, and it's not, it's not, but it can't say to one of us, but I think it's something we should take advantage of. So I will also be supporting Jennifer, but I'll tell you, I have great respect for Wolf, and I want him to know that. So, and it's not, he did very well as well. It's purely based upon what I feel the town council needs at this time.
Thanks, Nancy. I agree. The candidates were all of great qualities, and it's, you know, I whine about it all the time. I hate doing this whole interview process and having to come to this, bring it to a conclusion, but that's what we're here for right now. And so what I'd like to do is just start with Andy, and we'll go through and say who our pick is, and go from there. But Andy?
Wolf.
And we know, because we spoke about Mackenzie for the record.
I'll be voting for Jen.
Tom?
I'll vote for Jennifer.
And Nancy?
Jennifer.
And I'm voting for Wolf.
Jennifer.
Jennifer. So 4-2. Jennifer Jobin will be taking the seat. And if you'd like, I'd like to make a motion to move a unanimous consent.
Second.
People would agree. Second by Nancy. So all those in favor of Jen Jobin to replace Barbara Healy's seat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Thank you, everybody, very much, and thanks to the candidates who came forward. We appreciate it. Brenda's here this evening, so did you, would you mind swearing in Jennifer?
She's here.
She's right over here. Yep.
Sorry about that. I thought Paul was suggesting that.
Aye, Jennifer Jobin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a member of the Merrimack Town Council.
As a member of the Merrimack Town Council.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jennifer.
It can only be done during election times? It is a horrible thing.
I'm glad you didn't get a second for that.
I didn't get a second. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. I know that there were four great applicants, and I'm really honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Finley, do you want to announce that Jennifer will be with Library Trustee?
Oh, yes. Jennifer acknowledged in our interviews last night, as a Library Trustee, she will have to step down, but she made it clear that with the alternates, they now have, they're very qualified and capable of moving in, so it should be a seamless change for her, for the Library Trustees moving forward. So that, that was understood, so.
And can I just add, just to be clear, that for the public watching, Jennifer's appointment is through the next election cycle, and so the seat will be available for, for running at the next election in April.
Yep. Thanks, Tom. All right. Moving on, it's new business. Under new business, the council's consider appointing the following individuals to town committees pursuant to Charter Article 4, Section 8. It's always awkward. To Florrie Rothhouse, to Parks and Recreation Committee, there's a school board representative. Naomi Halter, Parks and Recreation Committee, is the alternate school board representative. Lynn Christensen's gonna be moving from full member of the planning board to an alternate member, and John Monwelly is going to be moved into the full member position. So.
Do you want this?
Go ahead. I thought you had something.
No, I don't have any.
Do you want this done all at once, or individually?
Move it as a block.
So is that what you're doing?
That's the way we often do it, yeah.
No, no, I was wondering if that was Nancy's ready to do.
Was that a motion? Yeah.
Well, I, I'm trying to not have to repeat the names. Could I say, to move the appointment of the individuals specified in the agenda? Or do you need me to read them again? I'll read them again, because it's a question. I move to approve the following individuals to town committees. Like Rothhouse, Parks and Recreation Committee is a school board representative. Naomi Halter, Parks and Recreation Committee is an alternate school board representative. Lynn Christensen, moving from a full member position to a alternate position on the planning board, and John Monwelly, moving from an alternate member position to a full position on the planning board.
Can I make a second?
Motion by Nancy Herten, second by Mackenzie.
The only thing I would say friendly is that you're appointing. You're not approving. You're appointing them pursuant to...
Appointed those individuals.
Pursuant, and just add pursuant to...
Pursuant to Charter Article 4-8.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
If there's no further discussion, call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0. Next, under new business, council to consider approval of the selection of Robin Smith as deputy town clerk, tax collector pursuant to RSA 41, calling 45C. I'm going on record that she can't go.
I agree. I second that.
So here...
We have no authority.
No. So we have, with the retirement of Diane, and moving Brenda into the town clerk tax collector's position, we need a new deputy town clerk tax collector. And Robin has been with the town for a number of years, and I, and with her this evening are her parents, Rich and Vicky Schwartz, and her son Mason.
And Ava. Our daughter Ava's here, too.
Daughter Ava. Hi, Ava. Welcome for this evening. So Paul?
I'm surely gonna miss her. My department will surely miss Robin. She's been a great asset to the town manager's office. Robin started with the town of Merrimack, and she came from Nashua as a, in the tax collector's office, she started there. She moved over and became an advocate of Secretary for Human Resources to help Sharon out with human resource needs of the town. In that time, she dove headfirst into helping Sharon. We went to a new software, and she was instrumental in setting that up with Sharon and working with Sharon. She's gonna do great things as deputy town clerk tax collector. She has the personality that when people come in, in a sense of humor. I'm sure Becky back there is telling me, saying, tell her not to go, but it's, it was a hard decision, but for Robin, I know it was, but we are very... are very happy that she wants to be deputy town clerk, and I think she's gonna do great things for the town of Merrimack.
Very good.
I agree, it's a very bittersweet situation. I think you're well loved in the manager's office, but we're also very lucky that you're going to be taking this position as well, because I think you'll do very well, and I think the office will benefit from you being there. So I wish you luck.
Very good. So? Need a motion to? This has become painful the last two months.
I will.
It really has.
I would like to move the approval of the selection of Robin Smith as deputy clerk, a town clerk, tax collector pursuant to RSA forty-one, colon forty-five dash C.
Second.
Okay, Nancy. Second by, first motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven-zero-zero, reluctantly. Thanks for everything, Robin. Is Brenda gonna? Does Brenda have the paperwork?
Wow.
She has the paperwork, or like?
This is a momentous evening.
Wait a minute, let me. Might be here, I didn't, I didn't. No, I don't, it's not in my. Are they up here? I don't see them.
You have multiple folders there, but.
One's just the, oh.
One's just the sign file?
Is it in the sign file?
No.
There's a misunderstanding?
Yeah, I don't seem to have it here.
She, she doesn't want you to leave, so she's.
Yeah. That solved their problem. Are you able to read it off the old? Yeah.
I have what I sent to you for approval. If you'll, if you can sign that. That's that, the original.
Oh, so. We have it right here.
I'll be sending this around for the other ones.
Okay. Now that we've got a chaotic mess here.
We're usually more organized than Jennifer.
Rachel, I can repeat after me.
I, Robin Smith.
I, Robin Smith.
Do solemnly swear and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly swear and sincerely swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent on me.
All of the duties incumbent on me.
As the Merrimack deputy town clerk tax collector.
As the Merrimack deputy town clerk tax collector.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution and laws.
Of the constitution and laws.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congrats. Thank you.
You're lucky, you're lucky, Brenda.
Finley?
I'd like to, I'd take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess?
Without objection, okay.
We could be signing these while we're in it.
Yeah, this is just regular stuff. Yeah, I just, I got it out from in front of me. All right, we good? Oh, so, yeah, okay. Paul, on the proclamation and. Of course. Perfect. Yeah, you can sign those. Some of them have, you won't have a name slot, but the others, you can. I lost an arrow here, so I don't know if somebody's gonna miss. It's, uh, we're waiting, what are we waiting for? I've just paused it to get these papers down here, is that the only reason? That's, um. Yeah, it's got the missing titles, so that's. We'll go then. All right. Thank you for bearing with us.
So for the minute taker, because she doesn't know what time, we recess at seven fifty-five, we're back at seven fifty-eight.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Next item under new business, council to issue a proclamation designating June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four as the longest day to promote efforts of fundraising funds and awareness for the care and support of those facing Alzheimer's disease. And this evening, for the eighth or ninth year, we have. Ninth year, Bob Bergen is here to speak to us.
Thank you.
Welcome. Again.
You should, give your all selves all a little pat on the back. This town did something this past year that's especially unique. I'll make sure the microphones off, please.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It didn't blink. But I'm pretty loud, so I don't often need a microphone. But before I begin, I have like forty members of the team, fifteen hundred people showed up last year, forty businesses donated, and this community, and I make it the Merrimack Endalls community, is now ranked fifth in fundraising in New England. We're at sixty-six thousand dollars with hot dogs, and puzzles, and donations, and people stepping up. And for nine years, we've come together, and we're gonna come together again. And it's pretty impressive that a community of this size can have numbers that we've had. And Jen, you're in a predicament. Now you're a town counselor, but you're also a library trustee, and the library is one of my exhibitors, so you have to decide which side of the argument you're on. But I recruit everybody, by the way, just in case. Three people up here are on my team. But I just wanted to share with you, we've had more people become diagnosed, they have found early tests that are now finding people aren't just in early stages of dementia, but maybe they're taking another step. Language is losing, the quality of life is losing, the cognitive behaviors are losing. And it's, one of the things about the longest day, started in two thousand and fifteen, was that we would have people get information, they'd get advocacy, they'd get, they'd see other people, they'd understand that people with Alzheimer's don't have cooties, and they are good human beings. And very importantly is the stress that we make at our event is that it's about the families who are going to be living, the families who are going to go on after the disease takes their loved one. And it is called the longest day because Alzheimer's is unfortunately the longest disease that has no cure. So again, I thank you for all that you have done. I, I take a great deal of pride when I talk to other people in other towns. There's only one other town in New England, that's Lexington, Massachusetts, that's been at it nine years. Most teams stay together for three years, and then they disband. Our team just kept getting percolately larger and larger. Donations got bigger. I am almost at the same point now that I was at last year. All my hot dogs were donated by DW Diner and Thirsty Moose. All my Coca-Cola comes from Coca-Cola. Chips come from Utz. All the other merchants and businesses in town, from Buckley's to others, have donated the ingredients so that when we set ourselves in motion to feed fifteen hundred people, we don't have a whole lot of expenses, maybe three or four hundred dollars, and that's pretty impressive. But to the exciting thing this year, something new. People said they wanted to have a vegan meal, so Karen and Adam at DW Diner decided to make pasta salad and watermelon slices. Then I ran into this lady called Laura Libby, and Tammy Ditman from the Merrimack Prince and Family. And they said, oh, no, you need a dessert can. Okay. The men of the Knights of Columbus tried that one year, and we destroyed about ninety cupcakes. But now we have a full complement of the food, and we have a complement of pasta salad, watermelon slices, a variety of homemade desserts, tea, coffee, drinks, and we've moved the drinks around, so you can get drinks from any one of the tents. You can go, you can get drinks, maybe we'll have some in the library, I don't know. But we changed one thing this year, it's five dollars for the two hot dogs and one bag of chips. All drinks, whatever one you want, is a dollar. So that will eliminate our little confusion when someone wants a second drink. We're gonna make the drinks a dollar from the very beginning. We start at eleven o'clock, we do set up on Wednesday because we need a lot of help. The library has been extremely supportive, actually, maybe half a little bit supportive from Paul, because the town loans us tables that make, most of my workers are over seventy, though we don't have to move a lot, this saves us. So the town is loaning us tables, and I don't know if I told you the good news, Dick is loaning us the picnic tables from the Legion, so we'll move ten picnic tables that are already assembled. And all I can say is that's a lot less to carry back. Our big thing is Thursday night, when it's all done, you have to put it back in the basement. That's, that, so we'll have a lot less of that. I'm very looking forward to this year. I actually recruited another member of the team on the way into this meeting. Thank you, Tom. I had an, I had a decision that had to be made, and I, I'm very, very, very lucky. You gotta be careful, though, my head cashier can be a little bit tough. She wants all your money. Nancy, that's your job. And she has to train my new cashiers, but it's worked out nicely, I'm very, very proud of the team, I'm very, very proud to say Merrimack. When I get talk, when people talk to us, the TV video that the Merrimack TV did was taken to national, and it was on a spin, and people were standing there looking at this community, and looking at the interviews and the videos. There it was in San Diego, California, and Merrimack, New Hampshire was being broadcast as a powerful longest day team. And I'm very proud of that. So I want to say thank you to all of you for all you've done, and invite you to participate. No, I don't know if the governor's coming, I don't have him on speed dial, but he has come four out of, four out of the last six years, so we don't know that until, you know, probably the, the day of the event, so. Any questions or thoughts? I, I have asked Paul to pass these out among you. I've got a lot of these this year because I would like to get people to be able to have the opportunity to put the name of a relative or a friend or a coworker on one. I have a lot of these, I hate to bring this up, Nancy, but you and I are gonna have to discuss where we're gonna display this, because I'd like to have it in the tent where the cashiers will be, so people can actually see it. I haven't told you that yet, but I'm sorry, I failed to mention it, but, but, you know.
Well, Bob, you, you, you and your team have done amazing work over the years, it's always astounded me.
It, it astonishes, it establishes, I sometimes just blink and go, how did that get done? You know, or how does it get done? And it, and it's, it's a nice thing. We are adding porta-potties, which is another thing, but there's a company in town that, you know, is working with us on that, so we're, we're, every year, it's another aspect of another thing we learned about, but last year, when the chief of police walked up to me and he said, Bob, we're going back to the station, 'cause I don't see a single empty chair. And he was, he was right. I mean, we had, I think, a hundred and ten seats, and they were all occupied. And, and then we have a shaded area for the handicap, which was set up by Linda and Greg Durbin, trees over on the master cola side with tables, so that if you happen to be disabled and you pull in on those spaces, you don't have to go very far. And they wait on you. And I was like, you did what? Well, that's cool. You know, because the nice part about it is, because you've worked with people, what do you, you and I worked together seven or eight years, Nancy? And, you know, you just don't have to ask the person, they just say, I did this, okay, good. If it worked, make sure you write it down so we know about it. But Finley, it's an amazing thing to, to be able to bring this idea and have it keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. It sometimes gets scary, though, you know, when you're, when you're coming up with ideas and your feet are cramping and you could hardly, I'm seventy-eight years old, you know, it's like, it's, it's a little bit crazy, but I, I cannot be prouder than when, when I saw the notice, when I got the phone call, oh, by the way, you're now in fifth place in New England. What does that mean? What? How? He said, teams just didn't come back, you know, and Lexington in, they're sixth place. That's what's classic, I was always trailing Lexington, Massachusetts, which I thought was fair, but they have, they come to our event, and they're, they're enormously impressed. I have people who have come to me and written me notes later, little cards, and it's nice, it makes you feel good if you have someone who's suffering and your family is suffering, come join us. Spend an hour, spend two hours, walk around. I'd be hesitant to say that other team, oh, I gotta be careful, Maureen's here. The other team, which I mentioned to you, is new last year, it's called Puzzles for a Cost, I almost forgot to mention it. They sell gently used puzzles, and new puzzles. There were five different merchants in town that collected puzzles, she has a staff of four for all day. I can tell you that my dining room has thirty-two cartons of puzzles, and I have my grandsons moving them from the house to the, to Bob LaRue's van, 'cause he's got the biggest van that I could find, and we will probably have six to seven hundred puzzles on display and for sale. I won't be anywhere near that canopy, 'cause I know better than to, I have two places I won't go, is the kitchen and over to Puzzles for a Cost, because they're gonna be doing a great job. People have been donating, people have been sharing, people have, you know, puzzles are part of the dementia component, so that's all I got to say. Any questions?
The only thing I want to add is, you also have a drive-through now.
Oh, yes.
And that really is for people who cannot spend the time to sit down and eat, and they can just drive through, and I've done that, so that's really convenient.
The literature said Church Street, and that was my fault. I've learned words not to choose, I don't use the word these anymore, and I, School Street is where the drive-through is. And there's a twenty-by-twenty canopy, and with Paul's cooperation, we kind of blocked it off a little bit, and they did very, very well last year. Again, that's another component of six, seven people.
That's right.
They take that, they, they do everything. They take that, they, they do everything they want and they're, they're, they're money changers and they, they just, and I, I don't, I don't know how it goes until the end of the day. But they were the ones who did the suggestion to take care of the disabled and the handicap right there. So I didn't even know there were tables over on the other side of the trees until people were complimenting it and I go, oh, okay. So when I, then, one of the women actually did it, Linda. And she just said, this is what we should do. But Greg and Linda have done the drive-through and that's another, every year something's new. I'm anxious to see how much more a group like the Merrimack Friends and Family will bring to us because they're a very organized group of ladies.
Absolutely.
And I would just like to say a few words, Finley, if I could. Bob, I've known you since I was a kid and year after year you've put this event together and so much work goes into this. And with $66,000 raised and to be fifth in the New England region is huge. And it guess, just goes to show how near and dear this causes to so many people's hearts, so many people's hearts in our town. And you should just be so proud of your work. Thank you for all that you do for this town. You partner with small businesses, you partner with local volunteers to try to get people out and it certainly shows. So thank you for all that you have done year after year to put this event together.
No, thank you. It, they're just, it's, it's not, it's our event. I mean, when, when Greg Durbin, who runs the drive-through, met with Paul and then we went out of his office and he's got chalk in his hand and Greg's going, so he's the town manager? Yeah, we're going over to talk about the parking lot. And Greg and he are having a conversation and when Paul went back to work, he said, that guy's the really, that, I said, no, he really is the town manager. I said, oh, so you don't talk, the talk is not your BS? No, I go to the, go to the, and that's the thing that makes our community better. On every single level that I have to get something done, I can find the source. And the library said, I got 20 tables in the basement, you wanna borrow? You know, because everything is a learning curve. Where are the things? Where is this? Where is that? So, yeah. Mackenzie, it's an amazing thing, but it represents the community and only this type of community could pull it off, you know, and it's, but for the people who are living with it, I won't be shy. I've lost two friends this year. I have a friend who recently, when I was sitting with him, didn't recognize his own picture. Six years is a long time and he's reaching the point. And it, it's hard, but yet it's not, it, I don't know why I, I ended up doing it. My wife didn't die of Alzheimer's, but right after she died, I needed something to do. And we, we, we've done okay. But again, it's only because you've got a, a huge group of people that all wanna take a little task and job. And that's where it's at, folks.
Thank you for your proclamation. Thank you for nine years of support.
Nancy has some, so don't leave yet.
I just wanted to build on, to what Mackenzie said. I, I don't know if anybody can imagine how much work Bob does before we get to that day. I mean, there's enough that day, but all the procurement of the supplies and the efforts put forth just to make sure that the costs are so low so that all the funds really go to this, to this cause. My dad died of Alzheimer's. So I'm, you know, when I, when I'm in the cashier's booth, I cannot tell you how many people come through and we have donation jars there as well. Some people just wanna donate, some people will donate and buy lunch, but every, virtually everybody comes by and goes, I know, it was my dad, my mom. And so the, the, as Bob said, the number of people in this community, the Knights of Columbus, the women that are shopping vegetables, the youth that are carrying things, you know, and delivering, I mean, it's, it is, it's all hands on deck. And, but I, I thank you, Bob, because I know the amount of work that you put into this and the effort and I can't, sometimes I'm surprised that you actually make it through the day because it's a long day and it's usually hot.
There are moments my cardiologist probably says, you know. I'm supposed to do 3,000 steps and I look at my watch and it's at 72. Okay, time to get off my feet. But now it's, it's a, you know, it's a really, when I get calls from other towns and I start rambling off, I've got this person, that person, I said, I got state, I got four state reps and I got three members of the town council and they go, and the town manager takes my calls and the governor takes my calls and they go like, oh, but you're a Merrimack. I go, I'm sorry, you don't understand, our town gets it. And it, it's fun seeing it, but it is nice when it's over. So.
Another year in the group.
Bob, I just, as we've said in multiple years now, how, how proud we are to be a part of this program and how much we appreciate the efforts that you put out. Being a member of a family that has dealt with Alzheimer's, like Nancy, my mom died with Alzheimer's and her sis, her twin sister did as well. And it, it is a devastating disease. It's, you know, she was, she was eight years or more in a nursing home. Every day was a new day for her, except she didn't recognize any of her kids after a couple of years. And it's, it's a, it's a devastating thing. And so all the work that you do and all the work that everybody in town does to help out with that, I think it's, it's, it's just very magnanimous and a wonderful thing. And I'm proud to be able to help out as well, so thank you.
Oh, by the way, he's my new tax collector. Well, all the monies have to be rotated every two hours. So he'll be rotating and don't, don't think you couldn't be, thought be found. So every two hours, it seems like every year the person that changes the money changes. So I saw Tom and I say, by the way, you know, so which means all the cash drawers have to be moved and all the things have to be done and it, and none of the money is counted until about the mid-afternoon on Friday. I have, everybody goes, how much you raise? I don't know yet. I don't know yet. So it, it, it's a lot of, it's a lot of things going all in the right direction, so. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Finley, do you wanna read the proclamation?
Town of Merrimack Town Council Proclamation. National Alzheimer's Longest Day, the longest day in Merrimack, New Hampshire, June 27, 2024. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the most common type of dementia that affects memory, thinking and behavior with symptoms eventually growing severe enough to interfere with daily tasks. And whereas while there is currently no cure for Alzheimer's disease, however, there is a worldwide effort underway to find better ways to treat the disease, delay its onset and prevent it from developing. And whereas nearly 7 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's and whereas it kills more than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. And whereas between 2000 and 2021, deaths from heart disease have decreased 2.1%, while deaths from Alzheimer's disease have increased 141%. Whereas one in three seniors dies with Alzheimer's or another dementia. And whereas in 2024, Alzheimer's and other dementias will cost the nation $360 billion. And whereas by 2050, these costs could rise to nearly $1 trillion. And whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and their families can gain access to medications and management strategies that may temporarily improve symptoms. And whereas there's a need to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and to honor all of the caregivers who support and care for loved ones with the disease. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the town council of the town of Merrimack, hereby proclaim June 27, 2024, as the longest day in Merrimack and stand in support of the 9th Annual New Hampshire Hot Dogs Stand fundraising event taking place on Thursday, June 27, in Our Lady of Mercy Church Parking Lot, dated this 13th day of June 2024, signed by the council and the town manager.
Thank you. That's one of the most powerful documents that I have. It's on my wall, I keep it.
Keep me on my conscience.
I was talking to the council though, I was just, that's one of the most powerful things that I do have. And, and that's one thing that carries a lot of weight with me when I show that to the other members of our team. And I make copies and hand it out to them and, you know, we all kind of smile and say, hey, okay. You know, I mean, it, it's a tremendous amount of meaning. A lot of the people who I get notes from, I send them back your proclamation and just say, oh no, the town is totally behind you, whether you're the ambulance crew or the fire department or, you know, everybody. It's not a disease that's unknown in our village. We've accomplished the awareness, we've accomplished the advocacy and who knows? Maybe we'll be back for a 10th year, I don't know.
I'm sure, count on it.
Yeah, as long as my garage gets cleaned out once in a while, you know, it's just, it is what it is, so.
We need a vote on this? Is it require a motion or are we just voting on the proclamation as a council?
Moving the proclamation as read.
All those in favor of the proclamation signify.
Somebody needs to move the proclamation as read.
I move the proclamation for Alzheimer's longest day for the year 2024.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 7-0-0. Paul, does this stay at town hall or do I give this to Paul?
Bob, if you wanna swing by town hall tomorrow so we can grab a copy of that?
Sure. And if any of you have these finished, you can give them back to Nancy. And then, Jen, I'll figure out how we're gonna build them, put a little wall and put them up, so we're gonna have people.
Hey, Bob, do we put our names on these or do we put the name of the person?
The person you're supporting.
Okay.
You, you could put your name on, but I, you know, usually it's the person who supports it, but.
Unless you've got Alzheimer's, doesn't count.
I mean, your mother may put your name on it.
You can put my name on it.
All right, thank you again, Bob.
We don't both need to.
Thanks, Bob.
Alrighty. Always an exciting thing to hear about. Item 400, new business, council to issue a proclamation designating May 8, 2024 as the 50th anniversary of the Merrimack Senior Citizens Club. Paul, do you wanna speak to that?
50 years ago, May 8, 2024, a group of seniors got together and created a senior citizen club so that they understood to get out and be social and meet and be able to talk to people their own age and, and do a bunch of different things. It's an unbelievable, it's an unbelievable feat to be in business for over 50 years. Just shows you the resilience and determination of a lot of our members through the senior citizens club. Way back when, in, I believe, I wanna say 40 years ago, it became John O'Leary Senior Center, Senior Citizens Club. And then the town donated the name of the building after Mr. O'Leary. And fun fact is, I was probably 17 or 18 years old and he asked me to paint the inside of that building when they took it over. So I, that was my first, first task to help him out, so painting the inside. It's been painted several times after, but the senior citizen club takes pride in that building. They, they have, they have done yeoman's work of fixing it up through the town with, in conjunction with the town. It's just a great club. It, it gives, it gives people a place to go and see other seniors and be able to play cribbage and be able to play mahjong. Too bad they didn't invite us on when we were in there the other day. But knitting clubs, bridge games, you name it, it's in there. And for a long time, it was the home for Meals on Wheels as well in town. So it's just been an amazing feat for this community to be able to say we've had a senior citizen club for over 50 years. And we're a little slow on the draw. A lot of the senators and governors also did proclamations as well with their anniversary. They had a, they had an event. So we are, we are recognizing them for their 50 years. And I believe that town council through support, and we support them through the budget, but also through support with, with everything. This is just another, another feather in the cap for the town of Merrimack to say they have an active senior citizen. And you can actually see other communities build buildings because they realize that just to have a club doesn't mean much. But if they have a place where they can go meet and play cribbage and knit and talk about their grandkids and talk about what's going on, it, it helps with the mental well-being for our senior citizens and gets them out of the house.
Yep.
And that's the major thing, so as long as they can get out of the house and interact with other people, which is a great.
So, yeah, I have a proclamation, sorry about my not being as smooth as I should be, but here we go. Town of Merrimack Town Council Proclamation. Merrimack Senior Citizens Club 50th Anniversary. Where seniors are vital and crucial part of Merrimack, of which we must ensure that they are able to live meaningfully fulfilling lives, meaningful and fulfilling lives. Whereas established in 1974, the Merrimack Senior Citizens Club has brought seniors living throughout Merrimack together to build community. And whereas in 1984, the John O'Leary Adult Community Center opened its doors as a multi-use facility, offering a space for the Merrimack Senior Citizens Club to socialize, play games, build friendships and make special memories. And whereas the Merrimack Senior Citizens Club, a social group of seniors, also offers important services for seniors to include safety presentations from local police and fire departments. And whereas the Merrimack Senior Citizen Club has offered humanitarian opportunities in working with organizations within the community, such as providing scholarship funds to a high school student as well as donating to local food charities. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the town council of the town of Merrimack, hereby proclaim May 8, 2024, as the Merrimack Senior Citizens Club 50th Anniversary. Proclaim this 13th day of June 2024 by the Merrimack Town Council. Signed by the council and the town manager. It's a pleasure.
You need a motion on?
Accepting the proclamation. I move that we approve the proclamation designating May 8, 2024 as the 50th anniversary of the Merrimack Senior Citizen Club.
Second.
Motion by Tom Koenig, seconded by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 7-0-0. And thank you very much. And it's something we have supported because years ago we've recognized as a council that we offer things for young and, you know, through the youth programs and everything and there's different segments that we try to accommodate and this is one way of doing that. But, I'll put it in here, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay, before we move on to West Road, if we can move forward the sewer infrastructure and the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund request before the West Road discussion, so both Laurie and Leo, they have to get up early tomorrow morning to get into work, so if we can move those up for them, they greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely, without objection. We'll move to number 600 new business. Council to consider the request to withdraw $195,897 from the Sewer Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of two new skid steers and a new F-350 diesel cabin chassis with plow, sander and an aluminum platform body. Hi, Leo. Should've said something earlier.
I'm kidding.
Kidding.
Okay, so, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Leo.
Tonight I am requesting money to come out of our CIP fund for the purchase of skid stairs, so I'll go through that first. These are the current skid stairs. CIP identifies an eight-year lifecycle for these machines, much like the loader that I came to get money for last year, these.
Your microphone.
Oh, I apologize, I apologize. It looked green to me, but I guess it wasn't. So these are the current skid stairs. CIP identifies an eight-year lifecycle for these machines. They're currently eight years old as, as I speak. These are critical, much like the loaders are critical to the operation of the composting facility. As you know, we generate about $400,000 a year in revenue and we take a lot of outside sludge. So when we mix the sludge together, we use these machines to then fill it in the bays. These two pictures here, especially the one on the right, you can see what's going on with these machines is the compost gets into the engine compartment, causes overheating of the hydraulics and other issues. It also gets under the cab and creates overheating and we've been having trouble with the levers. So we're at the point now where they're becoming unreliable and we have downtime, which is, we really can't afford to. So, talked about that. So we recently went out to bid and this is out of next year's capital reserve funds. And the reason we're doing it early is because of the long lead times, much like the loaders. They can be up to six months out. We had four bidders and we are proposing to go with the Milton Cat ones. They are a little bit more money, but they are a much more reliable machine. One of the big features that we like about these is they have special guarding that's going to keep the compost out of the engine compartment and under the, from getting under the cab. The other big bonus here is they both have seven-year warranties, which pretty much covers most of the life of the skid stairs. The case ones, that is a third-party warranty company, much like something that you would buy off of television for your car, secondhand warranty. Whereas the Caterpillar warranty is directly through Caterpillar. Milton Cat, as we talked about with the loaders, have many, many outlets throughout New England and they have a huge inventory and they will probably be the ones that come on site and actually do the warranty. Whereas the case machines will require some third-party company to come in and do the work. Whereas the case machines will require some third-party company to come in and do the work. And downtime is, you know, critical. We really can't afford to be without the skid stairs, there's no other way to load the mixed compost into the bays. So we're recommending to go with the Cats, even though they're a little bit more, for a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So we had a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the CIP for two machines, um, seventy thousand dollars per machine. Even if with, at the one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, we're still about twenty-three thousand dollars less than we allotted for in the budget.
Leo, how many hours do we?
About, they're about three thousand hours on the machines.
Right now, at eight years.
Correct.
Okay.
So the warranty is gonna pretty much cover the life expectancy of these two machines.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I said, the, the warranty that's being offered by Milton Cat should cover most of the life expectancy of these machines over the next eight years.
Perfect. Sorry, I have a monitor issue, it's not firing up on me, so.
I had a microphone issue, so.
Sorry, there we go. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, no apology necessary.
So, does anybody have any questions?
I mean, that, it's a lot of money for a piece of machinery.
It's a lot of money for a piece of machinery that's gonna only last seven years or eight years.
Well, I mean, you could probably get more life out of the current machines, the problem is, is the reliability is, is going down. It's, if you've ever been out to the compost facility, it's an extremely rugged environment. These machines work continuously all day long. We go through, you know, probably two or three sets of tires over through the life of the machine. It's just really hard, hard work with the compost and the dust and everything. It really takes a toll on the machines. And so now we've gotten to the point, you know, if they were in a different setting, they might last another three or four years. The problem is, it, again, it's the reliability of these machines, we can't afford to be without them. So recently, we had one of the two go down, and we literally put it on the trailer, which we're gonna talk a little bit about with the pickup truck that we wanted by, but we trailered it ourselves to Bobcat in Hudson, New Hampshire, to expedite the repair on the machine, because if the second one went down, then, you know, we don't have the ability to put the sludge into the bays. Because the, the front-end loaders that we use to mix the sludge are too big to fill the bays. These machines, that bucket fits, it's a six-foot wide bay. It just fits between, there's like an inch to spare on either side. So it's actually quite amazing when you watch the guys do the work, but they're really a necessary piece of equipment. So although they are expensive, again, where we generate so much revenue taking the outside sludge, we do have a commitment to basically who are our customers, um, that, you know, we take their sludge from. So it's, it's super important to keep machines that are, you know, gonna be reliable, so.
So you say you use these all the time, but three thousand hours doesn't sound like seven or eight years worth of use. How, how much utilization or how many days a week do they get utilized?
Well, they get, utilize every day of the week, so it depends. On Saturdays and Sundays, typically it's only town sludge. And then Mondays, we begin getting sludge from like Sunapee and other communities. Then in the middle of the week, we, is the really big time of the, so even though they don't get used every single day of the week, when they do get used, some days they're both are running, and other days there's only one running. But over the course of the, the seven years, three thousand hours is a fair amount of hours for a machine like that, especially in that environment. It's just like town vehicles don't have a lot of miles on them, but they idle a lot, they do a lot of in-town driving, it's very hot on the engines, and sort of a similar situation, I would say.
Right, but three, three thousand.
Eight hours a week.
Eight hours a week? Which doesn't sound like heavy usage to me. I'm, it just, if three thousand hours is sufficient, that's, that's great, but, I mean, that, it sounds like you're getting more utilization out of them than that, and so they ought to be higher than three thousand by the end of eight years or something like that. I, I just, I'm having trouble putting the numbers together in my head, so.
Okay, well, I, I apologize, I guess you'd have to see the operation to, because they don't run eight hours all day, you know what I mean? They get used, it's hard to explain, so you mix a load of sludge, you put it away, it might run for an hour or two. But an hour or two in that environment is like three times that. I, it's, you'd really have to see the environment that they're working in to get a, to really appreciate how much three thousand hours really is for those machines, even though it doesn't sound like a lot on a day-to-day basis. But it's just, you know, you, you're not, they're not running continuously eight hours every day, but they do run every day, and it's, I, I should've done a video, is what I should've done.
I mean, that's fine, I just.
A picture's worth a thousand words sometimes, I guess.
Every time one of these machines comes up and they talk about three thousand or eight thousand hours on the machine, and, and all I have to, to compare with is my car, where I got a hundred thousand miles. And it probably isn't that many hours when you really think about it. But I, I just, I can't compare hours to miles and get a relative feeling.
It is difficult, and, you know, different situations, so if this is something that I owned at my house and it only had three hours, I'd probably get thirty more years out of the thing. You know what I mean?
Well, yeah, I understand that, too.
You know, conditions definitely sometimes add more to the, taking away the life expectancy of a machine. The compost just wreaks havoc, getting all the compost in the engine compartments, the overheating, it's just causing, wreaking havoc. And the, the big plus to these machines is the guarding that they have to keep the compost out, which is one of the reasons we chose a little bit more expensive machine.
The other thing you gotta realize with the hours is that there's two guys out in compost. So one might be running a cat, this little cat or the skid steer for maybe an hour, hour and a half. Then he's jumping out of it because he's on the back end when they're doing the composting, moving sawdust in or moving X, Y, Z with the big loader, because it's not efficient to be moving sawdust with a small scoop like this, where they can bring in five yards of sawdust. So they're running different pieces of equipment, they're getting in and out of them. So it's not a constant eight hours like if you were on a job site, running a complete eight hours. But, you know, starting and stopping on an engine, turning it on, turning it off, turning it on, turning it off, it, it has wear and tear. And, and actually, Leo didn't tell you, the other skid steer that went out, the mechanic rebuilt it last, two years ago. He rebuilt the, he got the parts because it was gonna be down for almost six months. He went, found parts on the internet and rebuilt it himself. So these things do get used a lot, they, they're in an environment that is a moist environment, it's, it's.
It's corrosive.
It's a very corrosive, there's chemicals, there's a lot of, lot, you know, acidity and things of that sort. So they're in an environment that is a lot different than if a landscape, because I, I know landscapes out there, three thousand dollars, that's nothing. It's not running on just doing landscaping or dirt or, or things of that sort, they're, they're in a very corrosive environment.
And then when they do run out, they're running at full RPM for that whole time that they're moving all that sludge, and it's this short little racetrack, and they're, they're back and forth. And again, I wish I, I should've done a video, Paul, because to see those guys operate those things and the way they, they buzz around with those things, it's like, and one of the machines is to the point where we can't, we have to tell the guys not to run it over three thousand RPMs because it overheats so much faster, for whatever reason, than the other machine. So it, it's already like slightly disabled, if you will, than the other one. So the guys will tend to gravitate towards the other machine because it can be run a little bit faster. Because when they get four or five loads of sludge, I mean, it's a significant amount of yards of raw sludge and sawdust that has to be put into those bays, all in an eight-hour window. So when they do go, they're going like full-on, like crazy. So again, I should've done a video.
Did I, did I miss, what's the, are we trading these in, what's the disposition of the current machines?
Yes, I apologize, yep, there, there is a trade, um, so Cat is offering thirty-two thousand for both machines, uh, with the warranty. So the total price with the trade is a hundred and seventeen thousand, including the seventy, a thirty-five hundred dollar warranty.
And do you know how many failures we've had on these machines in the last twelve months?
At least four or five related to overheating of the engines and hydraulics. And I know that one of the, and I wish I had brought the maintenance foreman with me, because he would know better than I would, but I know that, um, we had to replace some hydraulic hose, and we had trouble with the leveling. I'm not a equipment operator, but there's a leveling feature on those buckets that they had some issues with that was related to the overheating of the hydraulics that he had to replace. So I would say, within the last year or so, we've had at least four significant repairs that needed to be done. That most recent one, again, we ran it to Bobcat in Hudson, New Hampshire ourselves to expedite the repair.
I always have the feeling, I'm, it's like, what choice do we have, that's the problem. I mean, you've done due diligence in terms of getting the pricing and providing us the information on the bids you've received.
Correct.
You know.
The, the thing is, is remember, this isn't the capital improvement plan, so we've been planning to replace these. We've been saving up all the, you know, those savings accounts that we've been putting money into. We've been putting it in for, for these purchases tonight that, that Leo's here for, that it's on the plan. He's coming a little bit earlier before July because of the lead times to get it in when he needs it, near the end of the summer.
Regular tracks everything.
You know, if, if this was pre-COVID, he'd be here August saying, I need this skid steer, and it'd be there two days later.
Right.
Now it's, it's six, it's.
But I think we all have a knee-jerk reaction to the pricing.
Yes, that's it.
And you're absolutely right.
I agree, and I, and I don't blame you, I don't blame you one bit.
I'm not questioning the rationale for needing it.
No.
No, and I'm not either, and, and what I'm trying to do is make sure we discuss it enough that people out there in TV land.
And I'm fine, and I'm fine discussing it. And I, and I really do like to point out, it's like, we are, we're to the point now where we take more sludge from outside communities than we compost ourselves. So we're, it, it, composting and the actual bringing in of the sludge and the selling of the compost is a money generator for the town that offsets the cost of our own sludge disposal. So it's a benefit to the town. I mean, if you look at what we sold for compost and outside sludge over the last, the life of these machines, it's a few million dollars. So the cost, so when you put it in, look at it that way, it's really not a lot of money.
The other thing you gotta remember is that.
It is, don't get me wrong, but just putting it in perspective.
But it's important that the community that's putting up those tax dollars realizes that there's a, there's a return on that investment as well.
Yes.
That's right.
I appreciate you bringing it up.
And I think that's the important point that I was trying to make.
Yeah.
Is that it's a lot of money, legitimate questions have been asked. You've done your due diligence in getting the bids and the rationale and all that kind of stuff. So I don't have a problem with it either, it's just that we have to do our due diligence.
And I agree, and I'm happy to, you know, answer questions as best I can to make people understand how important it is to the town and the operation that we're running and, you know, the revenue that it's generating.
So, so you gotta remember, you gotta remember one thing. Pre-COVID, these machines were twenty-five thousand, thirty, thirty thousand dollars. Post-COVID, they're seventy thousand dollars. And, and I don't like using the COVID excuse, but, you know, we used to buy two of these for fifty thousand dollars. Now, an engine for a Bobcat is twenty-five thousand dollars for an engine. We had one blow at Solid Waste, we had to buy a couple of years ago, it was twenty-five thousand dollars for a new engine, where we used to buy the machine for that. So I understand, look, sticker shock, they can tell you. You know, seventy thousand dollars for this.
But I think as Tom says, that's the point we have to make.
Right.
When you estimated revenues for this future budget, do you remember what you estimated for compost, for revenue?
Roughly, probably two, two hundred thousand, in that range. Sledge processing, probably around three hundred thousand, so about five hundred thousand dollars out of that budget for that. So, you know, it's, it's, um.
Page for itself.
Nancy.
Thank you, Philly. That was my question, just looking at the return on investment and if we're going to make purchases like this. And these are the, the most appropriate vehicles to do this work?
Yeah, it is, I mean, there's fifteen bays out there, they're only six feet wide. So when you think of the full-size loader that I came and asked money for last year, that bucket would cover three bays. But the problem is, is the, the agitators run on rails. So if you tried to fill, you can't fill those bays effectively with a large bucket like that. These machines, that bucket size fits, like I say, it's within an inch or two on either side of that bay. And to effectively fill that bay to maximize the usage of that bay and reduce the wear and tear on the agitators, that's the, that's the ideal machine for that job. And that's why, that's what we've always used, is we've used Bobcats a lot, this would probably be the first time with the Cats. But with the overheating issues we had, and, and we realized that they had this extra shielding to keep the dust out of the engine compartment, that's why we really wanted to go with the Cats in this case.
And the hope is it will last longer?
I'm hoping it'll last longer, we still have it identified as, as eight years, again, just because of the wear and tear on the machines. But maybe if we discover that this actually stays off some of those problems that we've been having with the Bobcats, then yeah, sure, we could probably extend them, but I don't want to make a prom, I don't want to make a promise and then, and come back and say, well, I was wrong. I will certainly try.
I won't be here either.
I'm hoping I'll be here, but you never know.
Yeah, no, thank you, and, and I'm, I don't have the, the visual of actually those narrow bays. But I'm just thinking, in terms of down the road, if this is, is something that the town is gonna continue to do, to take sludge from other places and, you know, things like this across, is there, um, is there a way that these narrow bays, is that the only option is to have these narrow bays? Or is there something that could be bigger, that, a bigger vehicles that will hold up better could be used? Just in terms of, I realize it'd be an expense, but I wonder over time if that would.
To build another composting facility, like you would have to change the agitators, because those agitators are designed to, to ride on the rails on that six-foot bay. So now you would need a bigger agitator, you would need to do demolition, say you were gonna try and use the existing facility, say maybe go make it two bays into one. The blowers, the way they're configured, all of that would all need to be reworked. And the cost of that versus the cost of the skid stairs, I, I mean, I couldn't even venture to guess in this climate what that would cost the town. That kinda.
Well, you should, if you have a chance, it's been here since I've been down to the compost facility, but it's a very impressive operation, and it takes that forty-foot-long, whatever the.
They're two hundred and twenty, this, two hundred and twenty feet long.
Is it two hundred and twenty feet, well, you see, it's how long it's been since I've been there. But it, it moves this compost a foot or two every time it runs down, so it's, it's moving the pile forward, and it takes the fourteen-day, whatever it is, to get to the end, and it's, it's gotten rid of all the bad stuff and makes it so it's usable, it's composted.
Happy to give tours anytime.
And you should take a look, I mean, I, I could go back again.
It is an interesting place, actually.
It is, it is fascinating what you can do, I mean, you take raw sludge and sawdust, in eighteen days, you make finished compost that has no pathogens, and we market pretty much everything that we produce all year through our marketing company. So it's not just the revenues of the sludge coming in, it's also that compost that we're selling. So it's, it's unusual for a municipality to actually generate income, uh, you know, and offset their sludge disposal. So all those communities that are coming to us, that were charging seventy or eighty dollars a ton for sludge, they also have their trucking fees. So at the end of the day, you know, it's probably costing them a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty dollars a ton. So, you know, we're really offsetting our costs, and it makes the operation of our composting facility feasible. Without the outside sludge, probably would make it, you know, kind of marginal. But with the climate, the way it is with landfills and everything else, beneficial reuse is still the best way. And, I mean, I have people clamoring from Maine that would like to bring sludge, so I just don't have the capacity to take it. But they don't have landfills or, and they can't land-apply it, so we're, we're fortunate.
Okay, thank you, Leo.
You're welcome.
Anybody have further questions?
No, we still have the other.
Yeah, we wanna vote and move on this first.
Do we wanna do it one at a time?
Yeah, probably get this one out of the way.
Okay, but that one ninety-five is for the withdrawal for the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, to the truck. I would get so caught up in that, yeah.
Finish up the second.
Sorry, okay, I'll move on. Okay, so the next thing that we have in the CIP is we currently have an F two fifty pickup truck that is now ten years old. Again, identified for replacement in the CIP after ten years. The current truck is used to do salting and sanding and plowing. One of the other things that it's used for is to tow the Toolcat around town, and we manage the, take care of the easements, so that, you know, if we can, we have cross-country sewer lines that we have to get out to. The Toolcat is used to mow that. So we currently have a, I forget, I believe it's a twelve-foot trailer, and we put the Toolcat on there. Last year, before inspection, that pickup truck had a significant amount of rust, so Derek Connell, the maintenance manager, had to pull the whole bed off and make some major repairs to the framework that the bed sits on because it would not pass inspection. And so at this point, it was gonna need some more significant repairs if we tried to extend the life of it. And so at this point, it was going to need some more significant repairs if we tried to extend the life of it. Recently, the highway department went out to bid. And so rather than put our own bid out, we utilized the bid results through Claremont Ford. We would like to propose buying just the cabin chassis from them. They'll give us a trade of forty-five hundred, which will make just the cabin chassis fifty-seven thousand four seventeen. One of the things we want to do is to put a stake body on it for the reason being that it will give us some options as far as sometimes we have to run manhole covers out to paving projects and things like that, which requires hooking up the sixteen-foot trailer, putting the manhole covers on that. With the stake body bed, we can just pop the manhole covers on the stake body, bring those out there. We want the diesel engine because diesel engines have more torque. The F-250 is a little undersized for towing that trailer and it has a really hard time like negotiating hills and things like that and some of the muddy areas. So it's going to give us a more powerful truck to do some of the work. The other thing that it will do for us is the camera that we use to camera sewer lines is mounted in the cube van. It's sort of like a delivery-style van. The problem with that is if we have to go out to cross-country runs with that cube van, it's not set to, to do four-wheeling, if you know what I'm saying. So we can actually put that camera unit on the back of that stake body truck. It'll be four-wheel drive, so that's going to give us some advantages there as well. We didn't go out to bid for the stake body, but we did get two prices. And Candy A Trailers has a nice unit for six thousand eighty dollars. Donovan Spring was significantly more, ten thousand five fifty, but, and they also have a three-month lead time to get the body in and then get it mounted. So once we get the cabin chassis, Candy will have that ready to go. The plow that goes with that truck will not fit on the new truck. And it actually has a bunch of rust itself. As well as the sander, is a two, circa two thousand nine sander that's on that truck. And we've had to replace the engine a couple of times already since I've been here in two thousand and six. And, and it's pretty, it's in pretty rough shape and is going to need more work. So we had a couple of quotes on that as well. Fourteen thousand six hundred for both units from Promolage Auto, excuse me. And the second from Welch Walding in auto for sixty-nine ninety. So when you put the whole package together with the trade-in and the cabin chassis, fifty-seven thousand four seventeen, six thousand for the stake body, spreader seventy-nine hundred, plow sixty-seven, for a total cost of seventy-eight thousand ninety-seven dollars. And we have identified a hundred thousand in the CIP for the purchase and replacement of that F-250. So that is what we are asking the money for and what we'd like to, to do.
Anybody have any questions?
All the money in the capital reserve fund, is sufficient to cover all these?
Yeah.
It seems like we've been pulling a lot of money out of various capital reserve funds for.
A lot of different things.
Department over the last three months.
The, this, this capital reserve fund, we put five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a year. So there is sufficient money that we have been saving up for the sewer, in the sewer infrastructure capital reserve fund. I looked at the number, the today, but I looked at a couple of them and I can't remember which one is which. But they're, they do have like three, four, five hundred thousand dollars. And then this five hundred thousand dollars will go on top of that. So it'd be anywhere from eight, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars in this capital reserve fund at the beginning of next year.
So it's okay if you didn't look at it, as long as your salary will cover any shortfall?
Now, now I do want to, I, I agree, however, I do want to say one thing. Years ago, we were coming in and it was, we have fifty thousand dollars in the CIP. The truck's going to cost us seventy-eight thousand dollars. Do we have enough money to cover those? It's refreshing to see that the pricing is starting to come back a little bit where we are looking at some savings instead of over, over what we've estimated on it. Which Leo's getting his feet wet, you know, this will be his second budget. So he'll tighten up some of these, some of these numbers in the CIB next year and things of that sort as well. But there is enough money, to answer your question in a long about way, yes, there is enough money in this capital reserve fund for covering that.
Thank you. Well, it is, I mean, it is twenty-four, twenty-five CIP, not this year, so, yeah, so. And honestly, I was surprised that we were able to put this package together for less than a hundred thousand. Because when I saw the hundred thousand, I, with the, the way the things have been.
Yeah.
I honestly didn't think that we'd be able to do this for that price. I really didn't. So.
Awesome.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Me? Nope, that was all.
For that one.
I thought you were talking the second one.
Aren't we sufficient?
Isn't that enough?
Because we have the skids and the diesel cab, right?
Associated equipment.
Yeah, and associated equipment.
So I'd like to move to approve the withdrawal of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the sewer infrastructure capital reserve fund for the purchase of two new skid steers and a new F-350 diesel cab and chassis with, with plow, sander, and an aluminum platform body. And do you need anything? Okay, and give permission for the town manager to sign any necessary documentation.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Jen. Any further discussion on it? So I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained at seven zero zero? Thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Next, so number seven hundred, new business council will consider the request to withdraw of one hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and six dollars from the highway capital reserve fund for the purchase of a replacement trackless sidewalk tractor with a snow blower attachment. Welcome, Lori. Hi there.
Good evening. So the town council has approved in the past a hundred and fifty-five thousand for the sidewalk tractor. Bids went out and they came in about twenty-six percent above the approved expenditure. So I'm here to ask for that additional money from the CIP. We bid a new sidewalk tractor, a trackless, for the reason being that we have one from two thousand and seventeen. We've had a trackless, this brand, since two thousand and five. So we have built quite a supply of attachments for it, which these attachments are extremely expensive. We use this machine all year round. We plow the sidewalks with it. We sweep the sidewalks with it. We, we do the mill and inlay program with the milling machine on the attachment. And we sweep behind it for that mill and fill program. We also do roadside mowing. We also mow the landfill twice a year with both of these sidewalk tractors. So they are, they have quite the variety of attachments that we can use for these. So I wanted to utilize all these attachments again with the new machine. But with getting a new machine, we needed to include a new snow blower. So that is where most of the price increase is in this CIP request. So the machine itself is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. And the snow blower attachment is eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty. So that is where I get the total net price of a hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and six dollars. There is no trade-in for the current sidewalk machine that we have because they do not want it. It's an MV. It has had some major repairs. And the best way to go about that would probably use auction or municipal bid to, to sell that machine. It is broken down right now. It is, it has no air conditioning. And when you're mowing in the landfill, we can't have an operator in there with, with no air conditioner right now. And right now, it's a three thousand dollar fix at this point. So we're working on a fix, but right now it is, it is out of commission.
So do I understand that we've already approved one fifty-five? Now, do you need a whole new motion or just the difference?
To make it clean, what I would say is that you approve the total of one hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and six thousand dollars for this trackless sidewalk replacement.
And that would supersede the.
Supersede the other one. Superseding previous.
And then once you get one fifty-five plus.
Finley? So that, actually, I was going to quickly ask, making up the difference of, of everything. You know, how was that plan going on?
Right now, there is around three hundred thousand dollars left in that capital reserve fund after the purchases of what we bought this year. So this one fifty-five would, this one night, this two hundred thousand dollars would fit in that. And we drop in around four hundred thousand dollars as of July first into this capital reserve fund for trucks and other things.
Okay. Nancy, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori. I, I just am trying to understand too, the process. There's only one bid on, you only had, so how does that work if you, what, you put out a?
We, we put out a bid.
Yep.
Requiring that their machine has to attach to our current.
Yep.
Attachments. So HP Fairfield is a regional dealer for trackless.
And so, but there's only, I'm just wondering, I'm looking, I'm thinking when I buy a car or something, I'm going to compare multiple places. And I just don't know how that works.
Yes, that, that is, that, it's a little different with some of these equipment carriers. A lot of them are signing exclusive agreements with companies that they would be the exclusive vendor in the New England region, in the New Hampshire, in Massachusetts. As you can see with the previous bid, we got, we got one cat, one, each case, one of each one. Because the cat dealer is the cat dealer for the region. The Bobcat dealer is the Bobcat dealer for the region. So in this case, there's only one regional one here. If we wanted to go out to bid, and like Lori said, when we were looking at this, we have a number of attachments that cost significant money. And actually, we went on municipal and bought attachments for a trackless from a community in Massachusetts that was getting rid of theirs, extra attachments. And we've been using it in the street sweeper and some other things. So what happens is that we go out to bid and say, we want this unit. Now, somebody from Ohio can bid on it. But there are exclusive agreements with the company, so everything goes through that one vendor. We could change everything out, but it would be significantly more than a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars because we'd have to buy maybe a broom attachment and maybe a snow blower attachment, and maybe a plow attachment, and maybe a lawnmower attachment. And just those attachments, if they're fifteen thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars a piece, there's an eighty thousand dollars on, onto the price of the machine alone, which is roughly, these machines are one twenty-five to one fifty? In that range?
It, it's one, one seventy-eight.
One seventy-eight for, for the machine alone. But, you know, so you might get one, a different one, like a case for one fifty, but you're having to throw eighty thousand dollars on top of it. Now you're at two thirty, first is the one ninety-six. And we will send this up probably to municipal more so than, than, not municipal, the State Farm Auction, because we'll probably get more interest up there than municipal because somebody who would be buying it, would just be buying it for the parts where if it's up there, somebody else might be looking at it going, oh, I could use this for X, Y, Z.
The other, the other thing is HP Fairfield is local. They are what, twenty miles away? Where the MV is a Canadian product. And just getting products through the border is, takes excessive time.
Next, Nancy. Andy?
Can we go back to the capital reserve fund for a second? You said in this account, is this the highway account?
Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
So this year, we had, this was our major expenditure this year out of that, that fund, right? The hundred and fifty-five thousand, I think that's the, the largest one. But you're saying there's an, how much left over from the other expenditures this year?
Well, the whole capital reserve fund has three hundred thousand dollars in.
So from previous?
Previous ones and looking forward.
Not from just this?
Not just from this year.
Got it. That makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Pleasure with the council?
And this has a life expectancy of twelve years?
That's the, the life expectancy of the last two we've had.
Okay. Because that's, I mean, it's still, it's a very expensive machine. But twelve years is better than seven, so, or eight.
I saw it in operation, actually.
It should be on the landfill right now, yep.
Pardon?
I saw the operator running it at the landfill with Paul the other day. And it's pretty amazing because it's up at the top of the hill there. It's a great view. And, and where it has to be done, it's required to be done. It's, you know, it's a working machine for sure. But the price is kind of outrageous, but so is everything else, including dump trucks and all we've known come about all the time. So, somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like a motion. I'd like to approve the withdrawal of a hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and six dollars from the highway capital reserve fund for the purchase of a replacement trackless sidewalk tractor with a snow blower attachment and provide permission to the town manager to sign all necessary documentation.
And this supersedes the hundred and fifty-five thousand approval from earlier?
Should we make that clear?
Yes.
And supersedes the previously approved hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, right? It was one fifty-five?
Yeah, that's the number, yeah. Motion by Nancy Harrington, was it you Nancy? And seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on the motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero? Thank you very much, Lori. And Don, Don's still here. So we're going to move back to our original order. Item number five on new business, we're going to have a follow-up discussion regarding West Road and the ATV park. Paul, Paul and I went out with Don.
Did a field trip.
And had a field trip. Was it two days ago?
Yeah, two days ago.
And, and we rode all of West Road. And it's, it was an experience, but there were things that were, the garbage that I saw, the trash seemed to be old, most of it. Right down to the beer cans, because I don't know if they've made Bud Ice in a long time. Maybe they have, but.
Natural ice, natural ice light.
Yep, and so those are a couple of the beer cans we noticed. But there was a lot of.
Fancy can.
Fancy, yeah. There was access to the landfill, which, the closed landfill, which was the biggest, biggest of concerns. And it's because the fence has a trail going along it. And then the fence ends and the trail continues through. So that's something that we'll have to eventually have a conversation about. But, but the West Road, it's, there was some traffic. I'll let Paul speak to it. That would be, he had a conversation with.
Yeah, we, we went out, we walked, we walked at first. Don, myself, and Leo Lovett walked at first and we saw a bunch of, as Don will have pictures of, of trash on the Merrimack property. It's on town, we own a portion of that property. It was on our property that there was, I'd say between five and six dozen tires. Cut up tires, sliced in the middle.
Why would they be cut up?
That is a, that is a landfill thing. You cut them up because if not, if they're whole, the water gets in there and they have a tendency to, to not fill and they can raise with, with it up and down. With it cut, supposedly the water is supposed to.
So why would they be dumped there and be cut up?
I have no idea why they were dumped there, to be quite honest with you. Could they have taken them out of, could somebody have taken them from the, the track at one point? They were using them up there and kids rolled them down the hill or what have you and taken them. But there is about six dozen and you'll see through the pictures that they have been there for a while. We've also, when we drove the road, I asked the police to set up a camera. And interesting enough, I stopped my truck because I drove my truck through there because of the four-wheel drive and it's a little bit higher than Don's SUV. And we stopped at one point and the camera was right to the left of us. As we continued to drive down, we, we got out, walked around, looked at the trash on the Merrimack side. As we continued to drive down, I got three pictures from the police department of vehicles, actually four pictures of vehicles. One was my truck, one was a Jeep, and one was one of those side-by-side HORVs. And it was two pictures, one going and one coming. So there are cars that, that are driving it. And to be honest with you, good for them. I don't know how they're not breaking an axle because I had to go about two miles an hour. I don't know how they're not breaking an axle, because I had to go about two miles an hour because of the rocks and the ruts and tree, tree roots in there and everything else. But, uh, there are cars riding through there, and that, what I think is happening is they're coming in off of Lawrence Road, and before they get to the ATV park, there's a little offshoot that they can go down. And it looks muddy and it looks cool, because it, there was a big puddle there, and we drove through, you know, the puddle, um, kind of, and mud kicked up on the truck. And if you're into mudding and stuff, that would be pretty neat. And then the other thing would be where some of the tires we found, there was some wetlands there, and there was like this little circle track, and it's sandy. So, you know, kid tooling around, having some fun down there, doing donuts or whatever, would be down towards the right-hand side of, um, on town property. It's all on town property that this is occurring. So, uh, there, there are some areas, Don has some solutions. We, we will go out there and pick up the tires, and we will pick up some of the other things. We've had conversations for the last week and a half, Don and myself, of what kind of equipment can we get out there? 'Cause really, we don't wanna cut trees, make it easier access to the, to those people, to people who wanna drive it, uh, things of that sort. So we wanna kind of keep it the way it is, with the access, but get rid of some of the, uh, the tires. And it's mostly tires. Don has a great picture of a couch, anybody wants it, it's for sale.
It's about fifteen years old.
It's free, it's free if you can get it out there. So, I'm gonna stop talking, so Don can show you the pictures, 'cause as Leo has said, pictures are a thousand words, so go for it, Lon.
I don't dare, I don't know if I dare say one of the solution involves the skid steer. I don't know if I dare say that yet. The skid steer. The skid steer.
Add that on to the to-do list.
So, just to give you a perspective of where we're talking about, um, this is a section of West Road that is considered a Class Six road. That means that the town does not maintain this road. And it starts, uh, at the intersection of Brienne, and it goes up through, all the way up through. It's about twenty-eight hundred feet, and I got that from GIS, I didn't go out and wheel it right now, 'cause I can't, and it goes all the way out to Lawrence Road. That is the section that is considered a Class Six, because we have not maintained that section. There are survey plans that have been done all the way around that. And the first one, starting at the Brienne, comes up the first section of the Class Six road. The area from the blue where I've highlighted, that's the actual road itself, up to the property line, that's extremely steep, and there's some boulders or ledge-out crops, as we were having that discussion, um, as we're walking by. So that's the first section of road. There is one driveway that comes off of this that goes to the Pineenberg property, which is, is right in this area right here. The next section picks up from that area and comes up to a corner. And this is, West Road will actually takes a right-hand turn at this point. There is a little driveway, or whatever you want, trail that comes down. And some of the pictures you'll see are about in that area. And this is the area where this little trail comes off, where the dumping area actually is. It didn't seem to me to be throughout, it seems to be within, you know, a five acre, ten acre area. It's not very big. And, but as we continued up through, um, the camera, by the way, was right at this intersection. Was where the he, where the camera was, and where, where they're seeing the activity. So, the road continues up, it's really narrow, it's a path, more or less. This other entrance right here is the entrance into the ATV, um, area for parking lot. And then the whole ATV area is just north of the West Road and between that and the landfill area. The next survey plan, um, picks up at this corner of this property, right here, and it again takes another bend in the road, fairly significant bend, and then it goes all the way out to Lawrence Road. You're talking about eleven hundred feet between Lawrence Road and the ATV parking lot. I figured you guys wanted to know some distances, so I threw some distances in there. But again, that is the entire Class Six road. Even though this section of West Road in here is traveled, it's still closed, uh, closed, subject to gates and bars. So, what does Class Six road mean? Well, I picked out, we have a, a book that I use, it's called The Hard Road to Travel. That's what surveyors use, some attorneys use it. And it kind of takes the RSA, and it puts it down into some English, in, in a lot of cases. But you'll see that the, their definition and the RSA are almost identical. So, a Class Six road consists of all other existing public ways per RSA two twenty-nine, colon, five, number seven. It includes all local highways discontinued, subject to gates and bars, and all highways that have not been maintained, which is where we fall in, and repaired by the town in suitable condition for travel for five successive years or more. It is important to recognize at the outset that the Class Six highways are full public highways in every respect except maintenance. So they're still considered a road, although they're not considered an accepted road. So you can't go out and actually subdivide, um, you know, the neighbors couldn't go out and actually subdivide off of this road without making improvements or doing other, other things. But in all other respects, the public has the right to be able to go down these, these roads if they can get down there. And then the actual RSA, which I said, is, it's very similar to the definition that The Hard Road to Travel gave us. So, the couch on the side of the road, and I had shown at that intersection, the very first intersection where the trail kind of goes off, and West Road takes that sharp left-hand turn. This is the couch, right here in the middle. I don't know if you can see it in all the greenery, it's also green. There's things growing in it, up it, through it, around it. This is another pile, I believe that's another couch or chair, or something of that naval, uh, nature. And there's also a tree in that, uh, TV stand, in, somewhere in through there, also. Then we talk about the tires, lots of tires. So people have been dragging them across the, some of the trails that are out there, and, um, to stop people from driving through. I will note that we walked from Brienne, basically, uh, the Pinebergs driveway, all the way down to this intersection, and I did not see anybody, any activity for vehicles. There were a few footprints, but I didn't see any vehicle prints in that area. Once we got down to this intersection, you can start to see some more activity down through there, as far as vehicular traffic. And this is that intersection, this is the road that goes back out towards Lawrence, and the road behind me goes back out to Brienne. And this is the trail that would go down and into the town's property. And you can see there are some trail marks in there, um, and, and that's, uh.
It's a big rock that.
It, it's Finley's Rock, we're gonna so name it. And we have more, more tires, I mean, there were just, there are lots of piles throughout this whole area. They're tucked in the woods, they're up in here, they're down here, there's a couple over here, there's some on the side. I did pick up some of the, the, the beer can, but it didn't show up here on my picture, so I apologize for that. Here's another one that has part of the trail, um, part of the ATV, and then this tire's on the side. There's a random tire up through here in the woods. And this is another one with, uh, one of the trails, ATV, that they've made and been going down through. And you can see there's some ruts in that area. But again, not a whole lot, there was not a lot of activity, at least I wouldn't consider. We did note that they have been, there's a wetland area that actually showed up on the GIS map. And they've taken and tried to make their own trail through here, uh, which is not acceptable. And you can see there's tires through here, and here's what's happening. The trail itself is actually eroding down and going into the wetland, and they're also pulling it with their vehicles as they're trying to do their mud runs through this area, which you can see all the reeds that are starting to come up. So, um, they, we really shouldn't have them going through there, we're gonna have to adjust that.
This is all town property.
Yes, this is.
This is the backside of the track and the landfill.
Yes, it's behind the landfill in the woods. And again, there's more, more tires. Here's the actual track, if I turned around, here's where the, they actually can come through. And the wetland is, again, behind me in this particular photo.
And that was really the only area we saw ATV or tire tracks. And getting the picture of the vehicles that came through, it was a Jeep, that's the Jeep that's going down there. It's, it's, uh, it's the Jeep that's going down there. They're, they're, they're not motorcycle tires, they're not your little four-wheel tires. These are, these are bigger, strong, four-wheel drive vehicles that are going down there to have some fun in the, like I said in the pit before, and through the wetlands.
If you don't mind, Don, that, I, those vehicles, we're talking a full-size Jeep.
We're talking, yeah, yeah.
So, do they, I mean, how much riding could they, do they do on that town property? It's, West Road, it's the back and forth, getting in and out, but how much?
They can go down and run the circle.
I can imagine a four-wheeler having an easier time doing it, but, uh.
It wasn't a full-size Jeep, it was, uh, Been watching a lot of MASH lately. So you know the Jeeps in MASH? Yeah, it, it's about that size of a Jeep with probably thirty-two, thirty-six Super Swamps on it. So it's jacked up a little bit higher, so the guy's going around with, with it, uh, in there and, and just driving around. The, the one thing that, Don, on this Class Six road, that's bars and gates, it says, however, cannot go against town ordinances. And Don will show you our ordinance in a little bit. So we can't just, if we say, we're gonna put up a bar and gate, we're gonna have to change the ordinance with it. So there's some work, and that's why we're coming back to see what the pleasure of the council would be moving forward. Like I said, we are going in there to clean up the trash, because it is on town property. And, and most of it's wild, because as you're coming off Brianna, there's a rock wall, and the rock wall keeps going, keeps going, keeps going. As soon as the rock wall ended, that's where the trash began.
It actually takes a turn at that point.
It takes a turn.
'Cause it, 'cause it surrounds another property.
But it, it, the trash and the tires kind of followed that rock wall on town property. So it was all, the trash was on town property. So.
Now, we're moving over to, um, the landfill side, and this is the area where you were taking, these are your pictures here, um, where the trail has come through and is coming into the landfill area.
So just to the left of us, the landfill fence that surrounds the landfill ends. And there's a little wooded area with two or three big boulders, and then this opening. And there's a trail on the back end of that picture where her mouse is right now, there's a trail that goes, continues to the right, and it loops back. So we're looking from the closed landfill, this is looking from the closed landfill into the woods and into the trail.
I think this is the cut, one of the trail.
That's the trail, yes.
Yeah, but that, that trail wasn't made by a Jeep, right?
No, that, that is, that is ATV, that's, that's the motorcycles that are using this.
That are coming off of the park.
Yeah.
Going along that fence line, and when the fence ends, then they go right into the landfill area.
They can go into the landfill, however, we do have a solution for that.
Here's another one along the other side.
That was a continuation of the trail along that, where the fence ended, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the capped landfill to the right.
Capped landfill's on the right-hand side. So, the, the entrance that you're seeing is down in the woods here, and you can see where they've come up through in the grass. It's light, but you can see that. But you can definitely see this one as they're going up to the top of the capped landfill. All of these, and this is gonna cause erosion, which we cannot have out there, because there's an extensive erosion control that's been put out here. And they're just blowing right through the whole area. So we're gonna need to do something fairly quickly. And these are all the, um, for the.
Stacks.
Stacks for the, uh. Yes.
That's what you said the other day, methane gas.
Methane gas, sorry, I'm, I'm into more, pain, pain things at the moment. So we come back to the ATV park, and we took a picture of the track rules, and then the Merritt, uh, Merrimack residents only are allowed to use this. So in your town code today, presently, under the use of vehicles under one forty-two dash seven, no parking is allowed in any of the restricted recreational areas, except in designated areas. The ATV park is considered the recreational area. So, under B, no person shall drive, operate, or maintain any motorized vehicle off the roads and designated parking areas within a restricted recreational area. So they cannot take them out, they can stay on the Class Six, but they're not supposed to go outside of that. So the Class Six, we went over right in the beginning.
The, the Class Six, they could be on that because it is a road, but it's not necessarily part of the recreational area?
I don't believe so, because it is considered separate from. I have plans of the landfill and of the ATV area, and it is considered separate from.
Okay.
And we don't have any, the, the gates and bars along the Class Six, which we can pull it up. But it will take another, uh.
Ordinance.
We'd have to amend the ordinance.
Ordinance from you. Then there's an exception, shall be permitted to be driven, operated, or maintained only in the ATV facility located off of West Road. So off-highway recreational vehicles, as defined in the RSA two fifteen, shall be permitted to be driven, operated, or maintained only in the ATV facility off of West Road. So this was done for the rest, West Road. But I think we need to have a little bit stronger language maybe in there, and then maybe be able to put some signage up in the area, um, and then possibly some gates and bars. So, I did also put in the off-highway recreational vehicle defines what it is, what it looks like. You can read, read through that. Couple, one thought I had, so this is the Class Six, might be to put up a couple, two or three gates and bars. You cannot lock them, they're not allowed to be locked. So somebody can get out, unlock them, and go through them. This first set here would be right near, just past where the ATV turnoff is into the parking area. You don't wanna put anything before them, because people would always be getting in and out, and that doesn't, won't sit very well. The other area, this landfill area up here, we need to be able to, and I, I just drew a straight line for now. I, I don't know, I was, I did not walk all of this, so we have to find out where the gate, where the fencing actually is, where it goes, and then where do we want to go with it? To be able to secure this area, 'cause we do not want people driving on that area. And I think we, we do need to also probably post some signs, um, in, in the area to, um, to stop the.
Well, I think that would be a very quick, easy beginning, because I think it should, I don't know what the penalty is, um, and I'm not a believer that we should immediately hammer people with a penalty, but you have to have something that has teeth to it that would deter anybody traveling on that, because that is a real problem.
Yes, this landfill area, we can do something.
Signs should, I think, to, as far as the capped landfill, should go up immediately, I would think.
All right, we just gotta get the right RSA on it.
Yeah.
Because there is, there, because it's a capped landfill, we can, there's signage in an RSA that prohibits people from entering into a closed capped landfill. So we can do that.
And the penalty should be delineated on those signs.
Delineate in the RSA. The, the solutions, now, Don's talking gates and bars. I think, uh, some of the, the other solution is, honestly, what we could do at the beginning of that Class Six road by the ATV park is put a nice-sized boulder in there, so that the vehicular traffic can't get through.
But you can walk in.
You can walk in, it's not gonna stop the, the side-by-side, because they can kind of go in the woods a little bit to go around, but it's gonna stop the. the, the gentleman who's doing the donuts and going around in the wetland down there. Um, the, I think that's one of the natural, I saw that when we did walk this property up by the tra, up, up by the track, they had some boulders that they put up there. They were the smaller kind. After we talked to the, the problem of them leaving, so some people did put some rocks up there. So that's okay. I'm a little more leery about putting rocks on the track where it was in case somebody goes, they can, you know, hurt themselves if they come off their bike or whatever because they're pretty much on the track. But I think that first one where it says right by the eye there, I think we can put some kind of rock in the area for that. Um, we're not getting, the fire department is not getting a fire truck or an ambulance down that road. Um, if somebody's hurt down there, they're, they're either walking in or they're taking their, uh, their, um, John Deere.
Well, they won't be able to fit it through if you have a rock there.
Yeah. But, but, you know, they're, they can get in from the other way, is what I'm saying.
Oh, okay, yep.
You, and we did it. You'd have to be backing out of that would be very, very tedious and, and interesting if you had to back out that whole Class 6 road if you come down to the end there. Um, the reason why gates and bars are not gonna work is because of what Dawn said. They're not gonna be locked. They're not locked. They're not a locked gate or bar. So we're gonna get more calls about the bars open or the gates open and, and, you know, we get calls about, you know, the police department gets calls about the ATV park is, is open and, you know, the people are supposed to be shutting that and things of that sort. So, um, it, that, that's one of the things there.
So Paul, you, you can put boulders in the road, but you can't lock a gate?
Yeah, don't ask me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand it either, Tom, is what I'm trying to say there, is that I don't understand why you can do that.
That can be a natural.
Because it's a natural, I guess it's because natural, but you can, you can do something of that sort, but you can't have a locked gate. Um, at the landfill, there are two very large rocks. If you can go back to one of those pictures.
I wanna measure a big pipe in it too, like an eight-inch diameter pipe.
One more back? One more? Uh, we don't have it.
Yeah.
There are two very large boulders there that if we can kind of slide them. The other thing is, is that over there on that trail, the way it comes out, we can e, just extend the fence to the rock wall. And that will shut that off from that side to get in.
To the land.
To the landfill. I, is there. You could, you could kind of do it. However, talking to one of the employees of the landfill, he said, I'd rather, don't put a, like a chain or a bar across because people have been used to riding it and they'll themselves, but if you put the fence up, they'll actually see the fence and stop. So we could extend the fence to, there's a rock wall just to the right of those trees. So we can extend the, kind of a, maybe two or three sections of the fence into that to do that. It's not, but it's gonna cost money because the fence company's like, oh, we can't get in there. But I don't know if that's something highway can do or we, we can see what a fence company would do to, to extend the fence there for us.
Doesn't, doesn't all of this, including the ATVs and motorcycles going down West Road and the ones going to the landfill, doesn't all this stem from them not staying in the park?
No.
It doesn't stem from that? Or it does stem from that? If they stayed in the park, we wouldn't have these issues, correct?
No, because that Jeep is not allowed in the ATV park.
So let's take the Jeep out of it for a second.
Those, those two vehicles.
I disagree that, that none of this is caused by ATVs and motorcycles. I, full disclosure, I met Scott out there. I walked the whole area. He showed me exactly some of the challenges that the neighbors are having there, as well as how they're getting into the landfill. And the wetland areas where I clearly saw motorcycle tracks going through the wetland areas. So I think it's more than a Jeep, right? Honestly, I, I think it's more than a Jeep. And what I saw, if I put myself in ATV rider shoes and I'm in the park messing around, there's nothing really to tell me where I can and can't go. I can go over that hill if I can get my motorcycle over that hill, but over that hill is actually towards the landfill, right? And if you look at the trail that they're going, straight out towards the landfill and down the side of that fence, there's nothing to tell the ATV rider that they shouldn't be.
Right, and that signage.
And so, in, in my opinion, I think the first step should be, we need to mark the boundaries of the park better. And then put up to the, the people that are in the park, that if they don't stay within the boundaries, they're gonna force us to take some actions that they're probably not gonna like.
Okay, um, that's fine. If that's what the council wants to do, we don't maintain the ATV park. That was done by the Rough Riders and they built it and they've came back. Now, there's only two members of it, but they used to maintain it and they used to police it. So there's only two riders there.
Is that all that town land, correct?
That is on town land, but the agreement with the Rough Riders is, then they, when we gave them the ATV park, is that they would be maintaining that and they would be policing it. But if you want us to start policing it and going out there and marking it and, and doing that, we, we can do that. But, uh, you know, the, there's only two members of the Rough Riders left and they open up that gate to that ATV park every day and they close it. So, um, we can do it. You just gotta tell us what you want done.
Is the first step having a conversation with the two members of Rough Riders and saying, you may lose this privilege if you don't start policing yourselves and the first thing to do is to try to keep people into the park?
Whatever the council would like us to do, we'd be more than happy to do.
Well, I'm not inclined to close the park. I think that you have to come up with a way to prevent people from going down or deter them from going down. Um, I, and I, I didn't spend a lot of time there. I just did the forty-five minutes, half hour, whatever.
Yeah, we didn't go, we didn't drive, we didn't walk the park.
And so Saturday would be a good day to see it, I would think, because that's, uh, when you would get traffic. If, uh, if we kept them off the town's property, it's a road one way down, one way out at that point. And so, um, it, it would be, they'd wonder what it's down here and have to realize it's just a single road in and out, that would take care of it. If they're gunning around the town property, that's where it would be. I don't, they can't go up on Doomis Road because it is a steep climb right there. I mean, you could if you were on your dirt bike, but they're not doing that, I don't imagine. I didn't see much evidence. I saw off one property, it was a trail that didn't appear to be used, but maybe at one point, somebody took their machine up and down there. But lately, it's, it's grown up with grass and weeds and everything.
When we were out there, there was no, there was no dirt bike tracks or anything and, or motorcycle tracks. It was mostly just big tire tracks and that's what we saw.
When I was out there, you could see where they threw boards and stuff down trying to get through the, the wetlands and, I mean, that isn't a Jeep that's gonna do that, right?
They weren't, they, they weren't here when we, we were there.
And, and the path is so well-worn from the park to the landfill. And that can only happen with motorcycles and, and ATVs. That's not Jeeps that's doing that. But again, if I put myself in the park and I look at the entrance to that trail, it looks like another trail to me. And I would probably, if I was on a motorcycle, I would go down it, not intentionally.
You would know what's a part of the intersection.
Exactly. And so I think the first step needs to be a better awareness and whether that's us or the Rough Riders or whoever it is. But the folks that are going there need to understand what the boundaries of the park are and that they should stay within those boundaries.
Well, that's my suggestion of picking up the, putting a fence, put, taking from that corner of that fence over and that will stop them from going there into the park.
Well, that, off the,
To the right. It's going out of the park and into the landfill. We, we add that fence, they can't get into the landfill.
Right. But also, it's, uh, maybe I'm in a different place in my mind than you're speaking about, but the biggest, what they're probably doing is going down West Road, banging into the town property on the backside there and getting in, following that to the trail that connects to the back of the land.
Yeah, we didn't walk that whole property. I didn't see much, I didn't see much of a trail besides that little, and then the upshoot.
It was just a loop, yeah.
Yeah, the loop and then that offshoot to get in. That's all I saw.
So, okay, all right. I'm gonna have to make another trip, but I think.
So are you agreeing with Andy saying that it's probably not from the West Road per se? It probably is from the ATV?
We have two problems. We have two problems.
Okay, but I'm saying that the traffic that's going onto the landfill, which is my priority at the moment, um, is probably coming from the ATV to that line.
I agree with Andy, yes. One hundred percent. That is not the Jeep. That is motorcycles and four-wheelers.
Now, if you do the couple of sections of fence, that will stop. I understand also what Andy's saying. There has to be some visual
Right.
clarification of where the boundary is and, and what the trouble is. But putting in a couple of links of fence would also take care of it, even for people who don't want to pay attention.
They'll, they can't go any further. So they're like, oh, okay, you gotta stop, turn around.
And, but that doesn't negate what you're talking about, Andy, in terms of still dealing with the ATV park.
Yeah, and again, they shouldn't be outside the bounds of, of the park. And, yeah, the landfills.
If they know what it, where it is.
Yeah, the, the landfill is, is away, down the way, you can put up a fence. What are they gonna do next? What they need to know is stay in the park or you may lose the entire privilege. We're asking you to stay in the park.
That, that, there's nothing, forget boundaries in the park because there's no sign.
But they know, you don't need to sign to know not to go on top of a landfill.
But, uh, true, you would hope so.
Obviously, not.
You know, I can remember being fourteen, fifteen, sixteen years old in Cedar Hill and going, oh, that looks like fun.
So it's gotta, it's gotta be signed first and foremost. That can happen immediately, almost immediately.
And I, and I do wanna apologize because I thought this problem was taken care of when the former DPW director was here because we had this discussion. And there was a plan with, to sign that with solid waste, to put up extra signs out there and things of that sort. And to go in there and clean it. And shame on me. I'll fall, follow my sword. Shame on me for not going out there and checking that. He did what I told him to do. So, um, that's on me. We're gonna get it cleaned up now, for sure. Um, that's, one issue is, and you're right, those are dirt bikes, those are four-wheelers out of the park into the landfill. I think we put the fence up. We, we gotta look at it where strategically we could put that fence to stop them from getting into the closed landfill there.
And also.
And I don't understand why, once we were closing the landfill, why we didn't fence the whole thing in. Which I was surprised because I thought it was just a little opening to let animals in and out. And I didn't know that it was like, when we went there and the gentleman from the trans station said, take a look to your right, that's where they're coming in from. And it is a big opening over there. Um, so that, that is, is one of the issues. The other issue is them driving down the Class 6 road. And just driving back and forth. And that was one of the issues of the neighbors, is people were driving behind their house on bikes, dirt bikes, HRVs, trucks on the West Road. That's the other issue.
But the West Road is a, is a,
A Class 6 road.
And we have to leave it open for the public.
And you gotta leave it open to the public.
But they have a right to as well.
But, but again.
They have a right to travel.
I'm not saying it's a public highway, they have a right to.
They have a right to travel it.
That's what, which is what your description is.
I have two questions. One, is there another access from another property? Is somebody coming into the ATV that has created a trail? And I guess I don't know where that trail was, how far it goes, or does it just go to the landfill?
We didn't walk it, we didn't walk that trail.
Right. So one I would wanna see, is it going to someplace else? Is there other people coming in here on off-hours that we don't know? Um, and secondly, is there a plan that shows the limits of this recreational ATV area?
There should be.
I'll, I'll have to do some.
Yeah, there, there should be that and there should be plans for the clo, closed landfill. In two thousand and four, two thousand and five, it was the landfill and we should have documentation. We paid a lot of money to close that landfill.
Those, those I've got, but the recreational ATV, I don't.
There, there should be, there should have been a plan that they were allowed, go back, uh, it was, change the name. Yeah, Roger Blaze came in front of the council a long, long time ago to, uh, to get that moved when, uh, the middle school was built. So that was two thousand and seven, so around seven and eight. Right? That's when the middle school was built?
I apologize.
I'd have to do the math. My baby's thirty-two. She was the first year they opened it, so.
Do the math.
Not that quick.
So I think it was two thou- It, it's in the two thousand and seven, eight. It's whenever the middle school opened up because they lost their, uh, their right to ride out there.
That'd be, what, fifteen to, to eighteen years ago?
Yeah. When did you, when you started, middle school? How old? Twelve?
I'm thinking fourteen, but.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Fourteen's the freshman high school.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Okay, so.
So it's twenty years ago. So two thousand and four, yeah, or abouts.
Yeah, so it was like two thousand and seven because it was in seven, eight because they, uh, that's when, uh, greater woods and they weren't allowed to ride out there anymore.
Oh, there's the bee.
Vic Agnes set up.
Paul wanted the, the bees.
The bee heads.
That's what he set up when we gave permission to use it.
So what's the decision? That's the point, isn't it? Personally, I think, go ahead.
So with the Class 6 road, um, so you say it has to be, still be open to public. So do the laws still, um, require that like an off-road vehicle should not be riding on it? So it should be treated as a regular road that was maintained and it would just be regular vehicles?
I would get an attorney's opinion before we did any gates and bars or rocks out there. Um, I know we can put gates and bars up. You might have to do something more in the codes to be able to do that. Um.
You have to, you have to define it in the town ordinance. That's what it said.
I think if, if the traffic on West Road, if, if our, if the town's property is blocked off access to it and noted that you shouldn't be there or whatever, and I'm not talking the capped landfill, I'm talking where the camera was, right at that intersection. If we blocked that intersection, there'd be no reason to go down there. Once they realize you're down here and you have to come back because there's no access to a playground. So that might slow the travel on West Road down. Yeah, because they have, it's just, it's, it's an encouragement. You, you can sit there and see that there are trails around there and, uh,
And, and just thinking of what Councilor Hunter said about having boards and things over at the, in there, those are locals. Those are locals in the area. Those are na, those are kids in the area that are doing that. People in the area are doing that to bring boards in there.
There's a large, open chunk of land in the backside there, so, yeah.
So one thing we can do is that trail at this intersection where the trash starts and we know the trail starts down in, we can put rocks or whatever in, in that trail so that it keeps people, they'd have to stay on the right, Class 6 road. They cannot go in that area. And that's, that's this set here, whether it be gates and bars or some other type of, uh, rock or whatever, whatever it is that is out there. And I think that's also one of the piles that was created with the tires, was what they were trying to do also with some of this. You can see some of them were on the side, but these here, they were definitely placed there to, to try to make a block.
And it looks like it's intact, so it's worked to a certain extent.
To a small extent.
It looks like it's worked, it's not.
It would be ten minutes to move.
But you can still walk it.
Right.
But I mean, it does, it's probably done that, that's why the one tire's.
I, I would have to think that maybe some of the neighbors might have put those in there?
I, I would imagine. I don't know if they did, but trying to stop it.
Your first attempt.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, they're trying to stop people from riding.
But, but that's one area where we know we can block because it's our property and it's not the Class 6 road. So that would be a good starting point. As we're taking the, the materials out and we have the equipment, some of the equipment there, maybe we can do something at that spot so you can't just go down the trail.
And that's not the road?
No.
That's not the road, no. That's the trail.
And the trail camera was up over a weekend too. And we didn't get any motorcycles or anything, just the two vehicles.
And some of these other ones might have been put on some of the smaller trails and just tossed to the side. It's, it's hard to tell whether, because that doesn't look like a regular pile that somebody would.
All right, so Paul, you're saying the camera only picked up, but Andy, you're saying that's not where they're coming from anyway. They're coming, you suspect they're coming from the ATV pack, not from these trails.
We walked the trail from the ATP park right down to the landfill. We walked the whole trail.
But, which is not the road.
Which is not West Road.
Not West Road.
That's town property, yeah.
But I'm saying that that's not where the traffic is coming from. It's from the ATV.
Right, because I thought West Road was the real difficulty. And again, I think if you're on a four-wheeler or a dirt bike and you go down West Road and there's no access to other play areas, then you're less likely to be bothered because it's a stupid road that goes in for a quarter of a mile and back out.
In my opinion, it's, it's two separate issues, right? We've got the issue of the landfill. I personally, people can disagree, I personally think that's coming from the ATV park, um, going that way.
I agree.
And then the second issue is, I think we got the issue of the Class 6 road and there's really two. And then the second issue is, I think we got the issue of the Class 6 road, and there's really two things there, right? You've got the fact that people are using that to go dumping, yeah, it's been a long time, maybe we clean that up, maybe it doesn't happen again. But we also have ATVs and four-wheelers using that road back there. That's debatable, okay, you had a camera, you didn't catch ATV, four-wheeler, but how many complaints have we had from Scott and the neighbors that live there, that say, you know, I got a two-stroke running in my backyard on Sunday morning? So, we can say it doesn't happen, but the neighbors are telling us that it happens.
No, I don't think they've been saying that, I, but I think what I'm, what I see is the problem is, they have a place to go, going down West Road, and that's what they do. 'Cause otherwise, if it's a straight road, I can't imagine they would go gunning back and forth, 'cause it would be a little boring as a guy on a, you know, dirt bike, um, you know.
Unless you're a guy on a, a dirt bike and you don't know what's down that road, and you say, I'm gonna go down there.
Again, signage, you know, and you're right, and you might still have an occasional going around a rock or whatever might be in the way, uh, but, I, I think that the start is to, blocking off our property, so that they can't get on, town property, so they can't get onto it. Signs, uh, big signs with big penalties for being on the cap landfill, uh, on, on our, on our land, you know, beyond the cap landfill, the town property there.
Well, we, we can mark out the ATV park, and it's just a track, so anywhere off the track, if there's a trail going off the track, we could put a sign. You're not allowed on here, we can do that. It's just, we've never maintained that area of it, and seeing, going out there and seeing it, there is a problem, and we agree that there is a problem, and that is not vehicle traffic, that is getting onto the landfill. That is definitely motocross traffic. So, we, we have, we have to fix that solution, because that is not allowed. One way or the other, we have to fix that solution, whether it's a fence, whether it's rocks, whether it's whatever, over there. And I, I guess we can find the gentleman who is in charge of the right riders, and, and talk to him and say, are you still giving out information, because they were supposed to give out information to every one of their riders that go in there for the town of Merrimack.
How do we know who's in there? How do we even know they're Merrimack residents?
They police themselves, pretty much.
So, they should-
We, I have looked for the last, since two thousand and twenty-two, there's only been maybe six complaints. Um, some of them have been riding on Sundays, and the police have got down there, and, and they've talked to them, they're like, oh, whoa, the gate was open, we thought we could ride, read the sign, kicked them out, um, and, and there was injuries from dispatch, there was directed patrols down there, so-
So, the, the people who are still the right riders, they have access, or they have, they know the people who are using it?
They're supposed to know, they're supposed to be policing it.
There can be some assessment of that, too.
Right, and, and then they might not, uh, and, and, you know, they, they might be done, I don't know, there's, there's two of them, one, one of them opens up the gate, because we got a phone call on a Monday morning saying, hey, I'm down here and the gate's closed, who's open, you know, and we chest, chased down the guy who was in charge, and he went down and opened up the gate on a Monday. So, you know, we can call him and, and see what, what he's doing, and bring back more information, but like I said, there, there are two major issues here.
Right.
West Road and the landfill, we all agree, they shouldn't be on the landfill, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
You know, uh, I, I don't even need to get a vote on that, we'll talk it down, and we'll figure out a solution to keep them off the landfill.
Okay, can, can we, can you come back in, in a couple weeks and, with an idea of, uh?
Can I come back in July? Because I don't think it's gonna be done in a couple weeks, because-
No, absolutely, no, I get it, I mean, I just threw that out there as a commentary.
Can I, can I start formulating a plan, so that we could, we can start this? So, I'd say the first order of business is to get the trash out. Everybody agree on that? Okay, so first order, um, take out trash.
It's to take out the trash, figure out what we're gonna do with the, to get these people off the landfill, and then the Class 6 road, those are the three things.
While, while they're out there, I would like to block off any, anything along the Class 6 that goes into the ATV, if that was acceptable, so that would be-
Into the ATV, or into the town of Merrimack property?
The town of Merrimack property, the, the, the track, or whatever, anywhere it is-
Well, anything that goes off of that road, except for the designated parking.
Correct, correct, exactly, so then, so close off-
And, and honestly, there's just that one chute to the left, going down the hill. When we drove it, there wasn't any offshoots to the right, when we were driving it into our property, it was just that one that went down the hill.
Right, right at the-
Into the, the wetland, where all those tires were.
And in the meantime, you're gonna try to check to the ref rider.
We'll talk to the right riders.
Ref to.
We'll talk to the right, we'll try to figure out, we'll get the, talk to the right riders, we'll also talk to the attorney a little more, to figure out what our options are.
So then the, the third function that I will try to start working on is to go up to the landfill, figure out where and what we might, might need to be able to close that out, and we will also-
Well, you mentioned the fence already.
Yeah, don't, now, those, Don will be working through me on these, I know what you want done, I'm good.
And so we'll revisit some of the July-
We'll revisit in July, I understand what you want done. We'll revisit in July.
Does that sound right to you, Andy?
Alright, thanks, Don.
And I'll, uh, I'll talk to the police about moving things around a little bit.
Now, is the camera still there?
I think they want to got it.
'Cause now everybody knows.
It was there for two weeks, it was there for two weeks.
Oh, okay.
But that doesn't mean we couldn't come back, right?
Yeah, no, and I, and I-
The police put a camera-
Oh, a camera.
Yeah, it was there for two weeks.
So, in the two weeks, that's all they got with those?
But again, it's not, and, I, and, I believe that it goes on.
I, I must have misunderstood, I, I thought this was a West Road issue.
That's what I, no, that's where I was, that was my focus, but, um, Andy's pointing out his trip with Scott.
And we did get the pictures, we did get the pictures of kids on the landfill, and honestly, I thought there was a little gate that they went through, I didn't know that there was a big opening like that. So, we'll fix that.
I thought it was unavailable to get to as well, so we need to block it off.
So, I'll work on finding the plans.
Yep, so are we good at this moment, Tom?
We could. And I'll come back in July.
Okay. Alright, thank you, thanks, Don. Okay, um, next on the agenda is May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four minutes.
We can get this done in a minute.
Quit dragging your feet, somebody make a motion.
Just to let you know, Jennifer, there is a, we're not supposed to go beyond ten o'clock, unless-
Okay.
Start new business beyond ten o'clock, you're at nine fifteen, so you're good right now?
But the point is, we have to do a motion to extend the hours.
It goes after ten, somebody has to make a motion.
We don't wanna do that.
That's why, this is what the gibberish is about.
So.
Any, uh-
Anybody have any changes, corrections?
I'll make a motion, and we can discuss if there's any, well, are there any changes first, that's right, we were doing that first, weren't we? Sing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of town council meeting minutes on Thursday, May twenty-third, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Andy. No discussion on that, call the question, all those in favor of the minutes of, uh, May twenty-third, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? That's, uh, six zero one, with Jen abstaining.
Jennifer?
Jen. E- either.
I normally say Jennifer, but I got in the habit of tonight of Jen, 'cause I heard it. Uh, comments from the press, comments from the public, Scott? If you'd like to, you can- Oh, no, 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 don't even worry about that.
No, no. Don't take us serious.
Alright, so, um, I believe, so I know Andy, Finley, and Paul, you'll have a, an email chain, two email chains for me, that has quite a bit of information that I've done some research on, so, in listening to the presentation, which I like, you know, thank you for doing something here. Um, as far as gates not being locked, when I read through those RSAs, it had to do with private property, so private landowners blocking off public ways. So, my question to, to you all is to, you know, what is Old Kings and what is Greater Roads, 'cause those both have gates on them, and I believe they're locked, right?
No, I don't know if they are or not, I know they have gates.
Yeah, I, I believe they're locked, I used to live down off Natta Cook, and that gate was installed when I lived there, and there was a big chain on it, right?
It sounded, it sounds peculiar to me, but we, we'll dig it.
So, so just look into that, because I, I do believe that you can lock those gates on a Class 6 road, if that's especially what Old Kings and Greater Road is. Um, there is entry into the wetland area, the sandy area that you recognize off the track, there's, you just go up around a corner and you go in there.
Okay.
Once you're in there, um, you do have access to like where those TVs and couches were in the, the sand pit, but there's also access to a single track, which gets you, um, into the landfill as well, so putting a fence up across that one area will not stop a dirt bike from getting into that landfill. Um, so as far as boulders go, um, you know, riding on West Road, as a Class 6 road, if, again, read through the, the information in the RSAs, if you're a plate, well, you have a, a vehicle, like a truck, a car, with a license plate, a motorcycle, with a license plate, you can travel on it. You cannot use an OH RV for recreation on those roads, just like you can't do it on a public road. Right, so that information's in there as well, I would suggest that you touch base with, uh, Fish and Game, 'cause they have responsibility for enforcement on those. Um, and we've been in touch with, with them as well, so them riding back and forth on West Road, um, you, you might think it's boring, but that straightaway, after that little corner and that hill with all the rocks and where the TVs are, that's a straightaway for them to pick up speed, which they can't get on the track. So, they do that, they end up down in Pine and Berg's driveway, they actually turn down there, and, you know, they'll ride up and down his driveway, too. He's got that posted, I think, um, so hopefully they're, they're obeying that one. And then as far as Merrimack residents go, ideally, that's the case, um, we've been helping the right riders, like, if we're out there walking around or whatever, and you see there's no, somebody without a, a dump sticker, which they're supposed to have to, to show, I mean, there was kids from, kids from Milford there a couple weeks ago, there are people coming from out of town, because there's nowhere else to ride. So, it is not just Merrimack residents there, and just the two people, the, you know, Jake and, and Mike trying to police that, is, that's just not feasible, so, any help that we can, could get them there.
Yep, very good.
So, that's all I have, again, sorry, I didn't wanna spend too long, but-
Thank you, thanks, pity poor Don, that's, so no, thank you, uh, for being here, and it's good to see you. Comments from the council?
Um, I have one comment, um, we were able to attend, um, we were able to attend like the ribbon-cutting this past weekend for the Girl Scout, um, who presented to the town council a few months ago. Um, there were a lot of people in attendance at that event, she did a really great job, um, she showed everyone around with all of the work that she had done on the Wasserman Park Arts Theater, um, and just a big, um, a big thank you to her for all of the work that she put into it, she worked very hard. Um, she got, uh, a lot of people involved, um, within the Merrimack community, um, so big congratulations to Nora Campbell, um, on her, um, on the Girl Scout project.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Anybody else? Well, again, welcome, Jen, you're gonna have a wonderful time, and, although, are you freezing in here? No, I'm not. I'm freezing, I didn't say, I was hoping, I was hoping you were, I was, I was looking for numbers, but, so anyhow.
I usually am cold, so.
Oh, gosh.
I'm a little chilly myself, so I have to-
You got holes in your shirt.
Yeah, I know, that's probably it.
Alrighty.
Let me just, again, congratulations, Jen, and, uh, thank you to, uh, the other candidates that did apply, we really do appreciate the effort that they, they put in, and encourage them to consider future efforts to, to continue to either work with the town council, or with any of the other committees in town. Uh, we need and, and depend upon all the volunteers and, and folks that do help out to run this community, uh, because it is our community, it's not staff's community, it's our community, we need to step up and help take care of it, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Alrighty, there's nothing further?
Move to a chair.
Motion by Nancy Harrington.
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, uh, seven zero zero, thank you, everybody.